Thank you, Tyler.
All right.
Is there a quiz on this?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
You were responsible for half of those, so.
Oh, yes.
Good morning, Jason.
Okay, clock in the room says nine o'clock. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the open meetings. Zack has amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance of the room for public review at any point. At nine fifteen, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business this morning is to open with prayer. And Commissioner Woodruff, I believe you have the honors today.
Thank you. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and for the recent rains. Very much appreciated. Thank you very much for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us and the many freedoms that we enjoy. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, that they may seek guidance from you and from your word. Look after the many people in law enforcement, our people in the military, and the first responders that are so vital for protecting not only our freedoms but ensuring our safety. Give a special look and guidance to this board as we go through our deliberations and our judgments today. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
And next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held September 12th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on September 12th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Wohler, second by Hughley. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Wohler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Next order of business is the claims and treasurer's receipts.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented. Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Woodruff. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
I make a motion that we accept the fee report submitted by the Lincoln County Sheriff.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
the 2022-2023 cash-in lieu program for health insurance. Becky, I believe, you have a comment or two on this?
The amount has been $400 since we started the program three or four years ago, I believe. I just left it blank. I don't know if you intend to leave it that same amount or not. I did add some additional wording to this. One of the departments last year gave us some grief about supplying their proof of creditable coverage. We did contact First Concord. It is per IRS guidelines, so I wrote that in there, and I put that it will be supplied annually.
Very good.
Has the rate of contribution to the employees who do use the insurance gone up? The county's portion?
That was not discussed during the process, so no, that figure did not change.
Okay.
How long has the program been?
Few years.
About three years.
Three years.
That's a new program. At least three and a half.
I don't know. It'd be my opinion that we'd alter employer contribution last year. Probably better not mess with this for budgetary purposes.
I'd be inclined to leave it where it is, personally.
I would agree. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt resolution number 2022-19 for the 2022-2023 cash-in lieu program for health insurance.
Second. In the amount of?
In the amount of $400. Same as has been in place.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Mr. Peeper, do you get credit for the rains we had?
You bet.
Good job.
Next order of business is the adoption of resolution number 2022-20 directing the county treasurer to issue tax sale certificates on those parcels which there are two years delinquent real estate taxes or special assessments.
I have not participated in one of these before or this topic before. Could somebody give me a quick overview of what it's all about?
So every year, the county board is required to sift through the delinquent property tax sale certificates that have not sold for the last two years. Long story short, you can look through the list. You can basically pull whichever ones you want, but you have to pull the ones that are at least two years delinquent.
Two years.
And then we will sit on those, and in a few years, that will foreclose all of them. So next week, you will get a resolution requesting to give me authority to foreclose the ones. The certificates I'll get probably this week.
Thank you.
Regarding the real estate portion here, are the ones three-year delinquent seed, is that part of the court procedure to strike those back taxes so you can get clear title on a tax sale?
Ultimately, we're not striking the taxes, but that is the first step in the procedure.
This is the first step in that court proceeding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I would move to adopt resolution 2022-20 regarding delinquent tax, real estate taxes and special assessments.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Next order of business is the approval of report from the county treasurer on property taxes which are uncollectible and need to be stricken per Nebraska State Statute 77-1738.
Don't believe there are any if my chat with the treasurer's office was correct this year.
That's what this report says.
That's good news.
Yep. Colleagues and I, what is your pleasure?
But then is the distress warrant formal report here?
So this is a combination final report of what the sheriff's office has collected for personal property taxes through the distress warrant process, and then the letter is letting you know what personal property taxes need to be stricken because they're uncollectible. Just in this case, there are none. Only there would be a list of things that the treasurer's office is asking you to strike.
And when you go through this, you'll find out they're pretty healthy sums, not like the other stuff we've been looking at.
Yeah.
And having a little bit of a skeptic myself in the past, I have checked a number of times on it, and more times than not, it's a business that's going out of business or something. There's just nothing there. But when you actually look who they are, which we can't see here, we can find it when you go and start looking into it, they really have done their homework. So it's interesting. And some, they've tried to work with them and made partial payments, got so far and just stopped.
So is that a motion to approve the report?
I would make a motion that we approve. What are we at down here?
Report to the county treasurer.
Okay, the county treasurer on property taxes for uncollectible and need to be stricken by Nebraska Statute 77-1738.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this?
So what happens next after this?
It's just a report that has to be filed. Nothing really happens.
And just kiss it away.
Eventually.
Goodbye.
Wave goodbye to it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
There used to be, but we didn't have the first record of financial actually on the receiving.
Oh, yeah.
It should be something there, but we think there are so many.
Next order of business is authorizing the chairman to sign a right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications. I believe this is for fiber optic and telecommunications line. Looks like it more Great Plains service.
Appears to be in the Sutherland area.
Correct. Out along Walker Road.
Jason, you've had a look at this?
Yes, reviewed it. No objections.
Does this go in our ditch?
Most of it, yes.
And when we go in the ditch, we're still 42 inches below at least the bottom of the ditch, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Jason, are you guys spot checking these? Because I see there's maybe some contracted vendors.
Yeah, and actually, we've been doing pre-construction meetings with whoever's putting the utilities well, just to go through all that before they start construction.
Perfect. I saw what I assumed was an independent contractor doing some of this, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were keeping an eye on them. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize you to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications.
Second. Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wohler. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Mr. Sterns, nice start on the rains. Just keep it up a little bit.
Yeah, we need it.
Okay, I have nine fifteen. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held September 12th, 2022.
Chairman, I would move to approve those minutes regarding the Board of Equalization that's held on September 12th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning.
I think you just said one.
2022 taxes.
Okay. Looks like the amount of acceleration is $317.68. Who's that for, Julie?
Metzer Land Company from Hershey.
Metzer?
From Hershey. There's a few items of equipment there that I think.
Okay. That was it, huh?
Yep.
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the correction refund submitted by the county assessor.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Wohler. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Looks like we have one parcel.
We do have one here as well. This is on the sale from the city of Norplatte to the community redevelopment authority, and then from the community redevelopment authority to sustainable beef. So when it goes to sustainable beef, it actually becomes a taxable entity. It was done before levy date, so we are allowed to put this back on the tax rolls for 2022. So this is putting a value on, I don't think it was 78.13 acres, based on the survey is what sustainable beef ended up buying.
And so it's going from exempt to a value for the land of $184,008, correct?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the notice of valuation change submitted by the county assessor for sustainable beef, the amount of 184,008. Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Charles getting his exercise today.
Are you sure it's too far for moving over here?
It's good for sure. Charles getting his exercise today. Color. Color.
You guys are really testing my skills here, staying organized.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:20 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. About 10 minutes before our next agenda item. Pass it down.
Is there more than just the one in here? Nope, okay.
Whole bunch of copies. You can get the extra.
Yeah, I don't think I got that one.
You don't want it back. It's the same.
Is it the same one?
It's the same.
I'll take whatever I can get. Job, the hard time we gave you at the meeting last week must have worked.
I'm here to keep a close eye on you today.
I need it, thank you.
I think we've been a thousand times again, that's wrong. I think we've rubbed a thousand times getting on that. Yeah.
Not up there.
Granted, from what I was told. Price is right. We can never stay in there. Can't have a fire. No question. We use the hot fire. Creates a consistency problem. This one isn't.
I think they have rental. A rental to borrow. I wonder if they, if they changed things.
Yeah, they're probably using a 47B or three quarter mines. And they literally washed that rock. That's why that quarry shuts down easily in November, it gets too cold. It's the first time they thaw everything in the daytime. Process.
Oh, I see.
Their season's so short, the process is wrong. It's a big one, I need that.
Yeah, that needs all the signatures.
It's already in there, though. I just took it out there for a buck fifty at times.
You're in trouble now, Ross.
This is what you call, right?
You got it.
Got it. Depending on the material.
Was that your last parade for the season?
That horse never dumped you? He didn't dump you, he never did dump you?
It really is, he's got some long legs on him. No, I would need, I would need at least a five-gallon bucket.
Okay, it is 9:30. Have a full room, it's good to see everybody here. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider an application by Gary and Ruth Sterns for conditional use permit to allow a commercial strip mine operation on property located in a TA1 Transitional Agricultural District and described as the northwest quarter and the south half, except portion deeded to the state of Nebraska in warranty deed, recorded on April 2, 1943, in Book 81, page 565 of Section 25, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. I will open this up for public comment, because I want to make sure that all voices are heard. Your comments, if you have anything to contribute to the conversation for our consideration here today, that you keep it to the topic at hand, that you not be repetitive in your remarks, and I will generally allow about five minutes of comment per individual. If you get to a point where the conversation is continuing on and it seems repetitive in nature, I will ask you to kindly draw your comments and your thoughts to a close, because I do intend to keep the meeting moving forward in a cohesive manner. So, with that, Judy, I'd ask you to come forward and speak to this as far as what transpired during the Lincoln County Planning Commission meeting, and any additional information that you have for us today in our deliberation.
Okay. Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. So this one is a little bit unique in the fact that it, the property is both within the city's two-mile jurisdiction and the county's jurisdiction. So from what I understand, there was a couple of ways that we could have done this. The county could have ceded jurisdiction to the city, or vice versa, or we could run it through two separate entities, which is, excuse me, what we decided to do, just for the fact that it would move along a lot quicker that way. At the city planning commission, on this one in particular, the planning commission voted to approve the conditional use permit application unanimously for 10 years with the condition that any disturbance of an acre or more would require submittal of a SWIP plan, which is a storm water pollution prevention plan, be submitted. That helps identify erosion control, water runoff, those types of things, is what is in a SWIP plan. They met on Monday, the 12th, I believe, was the date. And so then the county planning commission met and also considered the same application. And at that meeting, they did come to the same conclusion. They voted unanimously to go ahead and approve it for 10 years, and any disturbance of an acre or more would be required to submit a SWIP plan. So the same identical motion that happened with the city planning commission. Additionally, at that meeting, a representative from Van Kirk, which is doing this first project, brought a map, and I submitted that to all of you. I believe Becky routed it around, kind of showing the elevations where the actual strip mine was going to be located on that property, and what they were doing there. And I do believe that he is here in the audience, if you have any questions, as is the applicant, and I believe Jason is here, too, Jason Schultz, if you have any other questions. And I'm happy to answer anything also.
There is a representative from the company that will be...
Van Kirk, yes.
Okay.
I would like to hear from Jason as well.
Perfect.
Judy, you've done such a good job. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Joe.
While you're here, let me clarify one thing and make sure I'm correct. It was good for the city and county to recognize the SWIP plan, that that's per state regulation on anything over an acre, so that's something that was already in law, it's in state law. So just wanted to clarify that for the audience.
Yep, and they just wanted to, the planning commissions just wanted to make sure that that was on record, that they had to do that.
Sure.
I mean, even though we all know that they do have to do that, we want to make sure that everybody's clear on submitting of the SWIP plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Judy, the conditional use permit, is that just for the 29 acres that are going to be used for the strip mining, or for the entire 480 acres?
At the time of the application, we did not know which parcel that was going to be on, or if it was going to be limited to that single parcel. So when we submitted the application, we did it for the entire 400 and some odd acres that they own, just to make sure that we encompassed the whole entire area that they would be using. I think they went out later and did some core samples to see where on the property they were going to get the best dirt. I mean, you can ask the guys from Van Kirk about that, but that's how it was submitted.
And would, if field dirt is required down the road, the additional one-acre spots, would they be in the same area as what this project is calling for?
I can't guarantee you that, but more than likely, I would guess they would probably be in a similar area because of the condition of the material that they would be extracting. Now, I can't guarantee you that. They may go on a different corner, just simply because of the type of dirt that whatever the next project would need.
With that in mind, the erosion issue concern that might have impact on neighbors, has that been discussed at length during those permanent processes, Judy?
That was discussed quite a bit. The watershed, water runoff was discussed quite a bit at both of those meetings also, and that, again, I believe is why the SWIP plan was made to become of the forefront, so everybody knew that that is one thing.
Specifically referencing that, so people would understand that.
Yep.
Makes sense.
So once a point of entry is established off of old Highway 83 into the designated property, would that remain the point of entry, or if they moved to a different area in that section of ground, would they put in a new entry point?
I think I'm going to defer to Jason on that one. I would assume that that entry point would be the entry point, but that would be something they would have to discuss with Jason.
One more question for Judy. I see there was quite a, there was some discussion about the 10-year timeframe. Is that a common thing for the conditional use permits to have it be for more than one year?
It just really depends on the preference of the property owners. In the county, we have issued them anywhere from one year to 20 years, depending on the preference of what they're doing. Sand and gravel operations, which are similar, generally are 10 to 15 years. It just really varies depending on the situation. And that's what a conditional use is for, is to let you guys decide what they wanted to do. The request, when the property owner asked for it, was 10 to 20 years. City Planning Commission said, we're going with the 10-year timeframe. County Planning Commission thought maybe less would be good, but they went ahead and deferred with 10 years, figuring that that wouldn't be too bad. In the city's jurisdiction, we do have one that actually is open-ended, it has no end date on it whatsoever. The original application for the next item on your agenda was for five years, I believe, at the time.
So once, once the permit is issued, how much is involved in renewing that permit?
So it is good for whatever timeframe that you allow it. If that timeframe expires, then they have to come back and request it. If that timeframe expires, then they have to come back and request it again, just like what they've went through before. So if they go 10 years and somebody wants to come get some additional dirt in year 11, they would have to go back through the same process, the conditional use, and get granted, you know, whatever that would be.
And they would have to go before both Planning Commissions and come back in, just like this.
Yep, just like what they're doing right now. The other thing, you can always revoke this permit also. So if they don't meet standards that are laid out in either our code, or maybe you guys have put some conditional use, some standards on there, I can bring it back to you and say, "Look, I think you should revoke this permit because they're not taking care of the road, they're not taking care of the erosion control like they promised." Then it would come back to you guys as we're going to revoke the permit. So there is ways of revoking the permit if something were to occur.
So to that point, the applicant is fully aware of all of the requirements associated with the permit?
I hope so. If not, I will make sure that they have a copy of our zoning regulations that tell them what they are doing. The contractor currently who supported the application, always your property owner has to be the applicant. The contractor, Van Kirk, I'm sure they are fully aware of everything that they have to meet in order to do this. They do it all over the state. And most jurisdictions do require conditional use permits for these types of things. So they've been through the process before.
Well, I would imagine that the Sterns family is fully dedicated to being a good partner in this. I mean, they're a citizen of Lincoln County, and they want to make sure that things are done on the up and up, so.
I have a question, probably not for Judy, but regarding the erosion portion down the road on any parcel, revocation of the permit, unless it impacts right of way, and this is probably more for Tyler, but pursues that damage to a neighbor, do they have to do it on their own?
I'm going to defer to Tyler on that one. I mean, I'm sure they would issue a complaint with me, I would come in here. You guys would either say, "No, they're okay," or revoke the permit. And then the damages, I'm thinking that would be a civil action, but that's a Tyler thing.
We're going to make him speak.
There you go.
So yes, erosion runoff onto a neighboring property would probably give rise to a cause of action for the neighbor. That would also give rise to this board being able to revoke the permit, because one of the supplemental conditions is, "Our erosion controls, including retention and sediment basins, shall be provided during extraction to prevent a change in the character of runoff onto adjacent land." So it's something that our zoning regulations have already contemplated.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, thank you. You're always thorough.
Yeah, no problem.
You can stay there if you'd like.
Oh, no, I'll move, give somebody else an opportunity to do it.
Reserve the right to call you back up.
Perfect.
Jason, would you like to share some of the concerns or issues you would like to have brought before us today?
Yes, Jason, would you like to share?
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Yeah, I guess I did issue a letter pertaining to both this application and the one that follows for the conditional use permits. Out of the Planning Commission meeting, we did get a little more information from the contractor on this first project, considering some of the traffic that was going to be in and out of these areas. So I guess I still do have, our major concern is the condition of the roadways with all this increased traffic. Based on, I do have a little bit of data here based on some of the ADTs, the daily traffic counts through the state of Nebraska. So the contractor did state that 80% of the fill for this first project would be coming from the Sterns' property. I don't have any data for South Old Highway 83, but for East State Farm, just to give you guys a good idea of what we're looking at longer term, the average daily traffic there is 1,005 vehicles. With that, I assumed an average of a 10% truck count. So it's right at about 100 trucks per day that's on that section, which gives us a yearly count of about 36,500 trucks per year on this section of State Farm that we'll be considering.
How do you get 36,500 when you talked about trucks being an additional 100? You mean total traffic count?
Well, the total traffic count is 1,005 per day.
Right, but the truck, additional truck traffic would be 36,000. Additional traffic?
No, the current use is the 30, oh yes, I'm sorry, yes, the 36,500 is the total count.
Total count, that's correct.
Per year.
Because that's a big difference.
On that section, yes. And then, so looking at the 80% of the, what was provided, they said 375 loads per day roughly, so 80% of that would be about 300 loads per day. And that's just single, single load, so round trip wise, it'd be 600 per day for the heavy trucks coming out of that area. Which would be about 3,000 a week, or about 12,000 trucks per month on that section of State Farm. Like I said, Old Highway 83, unfortunately, we don't have any data on that one. That's a lot less traveled, of course, than in State Farm. So currently, there's not near the traffic on that road that there is on State Farm. So just the increase in traffic, I guess our concern is the ability of that road to hold up not only State Farm, but South Old Highway 83, the asphalt section there that comes off of State Farm, going south, is currently in okay condition. It is showing signs of wear and deterioration, so it probably has about a five-year life left on it, the way it is, before we need to do some sort of rehabilitation to it. So yeah, I guess the biggest concern is just the additional traffic and making everybody aware of, you know, how many trucks are going to be running on that. And due to that, it might change our planning. Of course, everything we do in our planning for our long-term look ahead is basically based on those traffic counts of when we need to rebuild and resurface and rehabilitate these roads. So that's probably going to significantly increase when we need to do work in those areas, so.
Jason, have you had a chance to go back and check farm-to-market when the corn comes out, beans come out? Truckload's going like to the elevator or something like that, I'm thinking about harvest season?
Well, the traffic counts don't take that into account. They're just a, I guess, a snapshot in time where they put the traffic counters out, and then they collect the data.
Yeah, and I knew that was the answer, but, you know, I would think as far as truck traffic, that would be where our heaviest time would be. I mean, Kit would know that far better than I would, but there's a lot of, so.
This is probably Tyler's territory too, Jason, but all the property, the applicants are aware of the insurance requirements for the road degradation, the bond. It's in the, it's in the guidelines, I just pointed out. And we can hear from them here shortly, I'm sure, make sure they know that. But the reason I bring the point up is, my question is ultimately, if you have traffic counts on certain roads and not on others that are impacted by conditional use permits, if that landowner does their due diligence and buys the insurance, how do we determine the damage? How do we prorate that deterioration value?
And Kit, to follow up on that, I had the same question because I thought, and this is Tyler's, not mine, because if I had the answer, I wouldn't ask. I thought that as long as it was a public road, and it met our axle weights, or unless it's a restricted road, if it's not, you know, then we've got it, the state rate. But I mean, we have the right to limit, and that's how can I ask the farm-to-market? I don't want to put some kind of restriction that would then have our, you know, farmers come back and say, "Jeez, I can't even get my product to market." So I thought that was our right as far as restrictions on a public road. I didn't think that, I mean, I'm not sure when it, this insurance, what that really is supposed to cover. I don't, if it's supposed to cover road damage, then I'm really questioning that, because...
That's, that's why I'm wondering about it, because it's in the guideline.
No, I know it is, and I read it, so I didn't...
You would know that from years past.
No, not really.
No? Okay. At any rate, it's there, and I'm just figuring, trying to figure out how you quantify that to protect the interest of the, of the conditional road and any mitigation thereof on any road, on any conditional use. But the difference, as I see it, Joe, under the statute is, because it is a conditional use, it has different rules than just farm-to-markets, so to speak, or normal traffic, or seasonal ebb and flow. So you probably haven't been involved in any of those.
No.
Evaluating those, maybe, Jason? And again, that's probably more of a Tyler question than it is for you. I'll put you on the spot, but I just wanted to bring it up.
And my question was, I wonder if that insurance even had to do with roads?
Yeah, it does say conditional road.
Not on J, does it? I think on I it does, I and I does, but J does not address that. Only I.
Well, it just says damages in general, so.
Yeah, that's my question, what is damages in general?
What else are you doing?
So anyway, this isn't the time for you to answer, I don't know. It's tough to put you on the spot for that, but...
But you're going to do it. Okay, so a big part of the difference is transitional ag. Agriculture is a primary intended use for that district. The extraction of material is a pretty clearly laid-out conditional use. It's a conditional use that clearly notes that it's subject to the supplemental regulations found in the Lincoln County zoning code. Those regulations, when referring to the extraction of soil, rock, oil, gas, all that good stuff, list a number of additional things that are, they're a part of the conditional use permit, whether the county board puts them on there or not. The one that you're talking about is simply that the landowner is responsible for any costs, for any damages to the road as a result of the extraction of this material. The damage assessment is done by the highway superintendent. If the homeowner doesn't, or the landowner does not like the number that Jason comes up with, they have the right to appeal that.
Thank you.
So Jason, your assessment that there's approximately five years left in the life of that road, that's with the normal usage taken into consideration?
Yes.
And this conditional use will probably accelerate that time period, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it is going to increase our maintenance of these sections as well as maybe, I guess, expedite when we need to have them in our budget cycle to do improvements.
Judy?
Can I make a comment? I know you guys have not dealt with conditional use permits in the past, so this is the first one that you've kind of dealt with. Your question on, you know, trying to figure out damages and things like that, I've been in the position that I'm in since 2008. And prior to that, I don't know of any that have came back to be assessed damages for anything that has occurred. So we've issued a lot of these, and so far, it's, now it's not saying that it won't happen, but so far, to my knowledge, that has not happened. We have had a couple of conditional uses come back because they're not adhering to some of the things, like if somebody needed to cut a tree, that one's in the city, but it's an example, that I have to go back, send a letter, say, "Look, you're not adhering to what you promised to do, so let's get that fixed," which most property owners do that. But as far as I am aware, I don't think there's been, but maybe one litigation through the city with something similar to this. So just if that puts your mind at ease or not, I don't know. But the other thing I was going to tell you too, when you make a motion, I've kind of laid it out so that you can lay out some findings of fact. I've given a positive motion, a negative motion with some samples. Kind of makes Tyler's job a little bit easier, when you're doing that motion. You can run through, I know it seems long and long-winded, but I'm trying to help Tyler out just a bit.
It's a long road that we're going down for ten years. So that's great that you have that detail, but to your, to your point, thank you for that. My concern is, and I know the landowners are trying to be good stewards tonight, but I want to make sure they understand that that should play into their price, what they're asking the vendor, or the purchaser of the material, that those obligations are there. And I don't know, but we'll find out, we'll hear from them.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
My polite suggestion on that would be to have Jason very thoroughly document the condition of roads with photos. And then if we get to the end of the call, if we have problems, now we have a before and after, it's not so speculative.
Thank you. So portions of the State Farm Road, we're going to be experiencing tremendous growth in our community over the next several years. There's going to be a lot of development out in that area, I would anticipate. How do we differentiate statistically impact on that road from other development and from this particular conditional use application?
Well, I think that would be something we would just have to take on a case-by-case basis, right? Depending on what's being proposed and where, and that's something we'll, we'll just have to incorporate into our plan.
Although your traffic is imminent and nearby, as far as time constraints are concerned, I wouldn't say that it impacts it at all down the road, because unless there's a conditional use permit involved, that's the difference.
And there probably wouldn't be a lot of this, just big growth.
I just know that we're going to have a lot more truck traffic in that area, and it's not all going to be just from a strip mining operation. We're going to see additional trucks coming from Walmart. We're going to see, there will be additional construction and truck use going into the Twin Rivers Business Park. There's going to be a lot of explosion in that area, is what I would anticipate. And I have knowledge of a lot of those proposals from the position that I sit on with the Chamber Development Board of Directors and the Economic Development Committee. So I just want to make sure that we're not being burdensome in our assessment on what's going on. I mean, additional wear and tear on these roads is part of the growing pains that we're going to experience, and it's going to be county-wide. At least that's, that's my hope, is that we have situations that arise where we have development and we have a lot of buzz in our community with new construction and need for, need for use of our infrastructure. So I'm just making that point, that that's something that we need to be taking into consideration.
But we didn't have, we didn't have the ability to weigh in on that, so we do this, so we're weighing in.
I just, I understand, I appreciate your comments.
So this is, this is our responsibility to make sure we're looking out for the county system.
I'm well aware that it's our responsibility to look out for our infrastructure. It's also our responsibility, is the county board, to ensure that we're being conducive to economic growth, is just my point. That's, that's my concern. I'm hearing your points and respecting your points, so.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to speak with the contractor for the yard excavation from Van Kirk?
Yeah, I think, I guess one more thing, I agree, I think we need the growth. This is something that I think is going to be great for the county. And I'm not saying that there's going to be any imminent damage done by these projects either. I'm just addressing the concern that I have for our long-term look at our budget. You know, it is going to probably significantly change in every project that comes up. It just, it'll be something we'll have to adapt to and work within our budget, so.
That's, that's part of our one and six-year plan, though. We are consistently and continuously assessing and triaging the use of our roads and the wear and tear on our roads, so. Just making that point. Do we have a representative from the contractor?
Darren Helbrush-Schiller, 2423 West Anna Grinnon, Nebraska, representing Van Kirk Brothers Contracting. I brought a couple copies of it, but the fourth copy was the proposed borrow. Just to give you a little background, I guess, the borrow itself is going to encompass between 29 and 35 acres. We're planning pre-watering the borrow. On the drawing itself, there's a blue line there, that's going to be a earth and... On the drawing itself, there's a blue line there, that's gonna be a earthen burn that we're gonna hold at a certain contour to hold off any runoff we have from the pre-watering. The pre-watering itself is a slow process. It's about four and a half gallons a minute per sprinkler. There's about a hundred sprinklers per tow line. That tow line will reach the whole length of the Boro, north and south.
Sir, how big is your pump or your, your well?
Uh, fifty horse.
How many gallons a minute?
Uh, it could go up to about four hundred. Well, we're putting on the site.
Yes.
On the Boro pit, yeah. It's a fifty horse. We'll have a generator there, run it, submersible. It's a four-inch drop well and an eight-inch casing. We're gonna use it for, we're gonna tee off it also, still have a water stand for dust control for our own water trucks and all that for the pit, and also the half-mile gravel road we have that we'll be traveling. We'll also do the same, we have a well going in down at the project, uh, the northeast corner. Use it for dust control on, I think that's Golden Road, and also up at the Boro pit, North Boro pit. We have two, two water sources, and they will be drilled on the fourteenth after the inner heat hazard variance. We applied with them a month ago or so. Um, anyhow, those numbers on the drawing itself are just elevations, what they are, natural elevations, original ground as it is right now. I don't have the cuts and fills or cuts on there, I just give an idea how that kinda lays. Uh, we put in some, uh, silk traps, some silk fences downstream in the, in the natural draw, also in the road ditch. Um, of course, we included our warning signs, trucks entering, uh, different things on the, on the old Highway eighty-three road. We'll have one point of ingress, and we might have two, but we have, right now, we have one point of ingress and egress that's down on that south, or north piece of the Boro pit.
Down towards the...
Towards the power lines. We stayed away from the power lines, we're to the south of them all day through.
And it would be your intention to have just, no matter where you're taking?
Yeah, we'll build one, because we'll have to go over that water line that feeds the tow line, so we'll have to encase that with a culver or something to make a crossing. Uh, the only reason I put a second one in there, 'cause we have a, planning to put staging, like equipment, toward the south end, and it just seemed like a, kind of a clean operation to have its own entrance. We'll rock those entrances with crushed concrete, or we have millings or something too, to give it a hard surfacing, so. It's not only keep the dust down for traction and just to identify more as a roadway. We'll have to put a culver into, and. Swip plan itself, we, we, we just received the subcontract Friday, so we just signed our subcontract Friday with, uh, with the general, and we're gonna have our swip plan to be a standalone for each Boro pit. We were gonna tag off the swip plan for the project, but it's gonna be a two-year-plus project, and we don't want, have to carry that swip plan that long, because we'll be long gone. So we just gonna have our own, have our own identity with the swip plan. So we're gonna have that filed, and, and in that, we'll have, of course, our erosion control, best, best practices, and some of that's on those plans there. As we get done, as we progress with this, we're kind of split that in four quadrants. When we get an area done, we'll topsoil it, seed it, fertilize it, and we'll have water there so we can hopefully get, establish some growth, but we'll put a permanent pasture mixed with a cover crop, either be oats, rye, something that sprouts quick. Um, so each, each four pieces of that whole Boro pit, we're not gonna have all twenty-nine acres open at one time. We like to reclaim it as we go. We're there to kind of babysit it. Um, the intent too is, now, the design's kind of fluid yet, but we're gonna be overwhelmed with strippings and, and kind of heavy, heavy, hoois soil out of the existing lagoon. Uh, we'd like, we have, we don't have many green places to put it, so we're gonna try to haul some of it back up to the hill and put some good topsoil out there on the Boro, because there's not a lot out there right now. We did a couple samples two weeks ago. Uh, I got the results back, and it was about seventy-five percent, I didn't make it easy, seventy-five percent dirt, twenty-five percent sand on the sterns of Boro.
Do you have a sample of the material that's in the lagoon base now? That you're planning on hauling out as far as heavy metals and such?
No, it's just, it's just the stripping, it's just be the vegeta, more the vegetation layer of it, it's not even the clay layer yet.
So the entire operation will be on the east side of the road?
West.
On the west side of the road?
Right.
And is there property also on the east side of the road that's in these acres?
No, just the west side's the only place.
Just the west.
Right. And that, you'll see those, those tacks, I think they're green on there, that's the natural draw down below to the west. Kind of meanders and flows a little bit northwest for ways, it turns, goes back underneath the bridge of the county road, and that's where we're gonna intercept any runoff or any silt we ever have prior to any other landowner, or even get to the county road, so. And if we have to add a silk trap, we sure will, but I don't, I'm paying for this water, so I don't want it running off. I mean, it's not cheap, so.
Does this site give you enough fill, considering the fact that you had mentioned last week that the bulk of the material for this fill is coming from this site?
Right.
Does this area provide you plenty of fill?
Yeah, when I did a takeoff earlier, what I did over the weekend, just to make some cuts going from, making it slope from east to west down through that draw, I could come up with a million yards in that, in that Boro, and I don't need that much, so.
Is your company also the company that will be managing this, the second site that we're gonna be talking about today? Will you be hauling from both sites at the same time?
I doubt it. Um, and the reason being is, one, one facilitates our need more for sand than dirt, and the other one facilitates more for dirt than sand, so just depends on what condition, or conditions in, I guess, when we get to, depends what the weather does, the main thing. Also, while I'll just kind of address the roads, um, we did a project, it's not new to this magnitude, but over at South of Maxwell, when we did the interstate, we hauled from Ben Taylor's ground, just off the canal there, and I had two-hundred thousand plus yards, I think it's two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, somewhere there. And I contacted the previous commissioner, Carla, and she came out, looked at the roads and everything before we started. We never had any problem. We got done, we had to re-shoulder some of the turns, you know, the intersections where we trail off a little bit. Uh, we seeded them and that, and they even set up a couple scale surprises on us, and we were always fine with our weights. There's always something else, like a tail rider or something else be out, but, um, and she was good to work with, and we, we did take care of the roads. We didn't run overweight, and I think our guys kind of know the drill as far as what they need to do. And granted, this will be a lot more volume on this, but it's kind of nature of the beast on this one, I'm afraid.
Well, I appreciate the, uh, the experience that you're bringing to the project. Obviously, as you've stated, this isn't your first rodeo.
No, and a simple analogy, kind of on the road, it's probably too simple, but it reminds me of, of the toaster we have in our break room at the shop, at the office. If, if I go on a binge with a bunch, making toast on a toast diet, and it breaks down on me, is it my responsibility completely? I mean, just 'cause it went laid down on me, or is it all the other pieces of toast, bagels, larger pieces of waffles, whatever, that prior to my use? I mean, that's kind of how it goes, and I, I sympathize with his, with Mr. Schultz here with his roads. I, I know that's a headache, and I know that's an issue, but it's part of the progress of man too. So we, we do our due diligence, and like I said, we'll keep the dust down on the road, we'll probably end up re-graveling the county road, and we know that going into it, but asphalt roads are always subject to, who knows what, sure.
Well, as long as you're keeping your weights on the trucks where they need to be, uh, and we're doing our due diligence with crack sealing and everything else.
Uh, one thing also, just to add, that when I tried to round up trucks for this project, I tried to get everything local, which I think right now I'm at twenty-six or twenty-four trucks locally. And I made sure they're all triple axle, they could all haul, scale easily twenty-five ton, because I didn't want, I, we're gonna have thirty trucks, we're gonna have three excavators in that Boro pit. My guys are like robots. If they get loading a truck, they're gonna load them all the same, so I want all the same trucks. So if we have triple axle, twenty-five ton easy payload, they'll load them all the same. I don't want a double axle, and I don't want a short block, I don't want a dump truck, because you rate different, you load different, and if it's, if it's systematic like that, it will keep them to so, so many scoops per, per excavator, per truck, and there shouldn't be a problem, so.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions?
You know, I still have a hard time using the word strip mining, although that's what it is, that's what it falls under. And, and I was here on some others in the past, and, you know, back then it was, you know, a Boro pit, or, you know, we're getting filtered. It just seems so funny, but that's exactly what it is. I just haven't ever used it before, you know, when we talk about Boro around here.
It's really nothing near the Lincoln County, so. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this conditional use permit? Colleagues of mine?
Are there any additional conditions that, uh, we are considering adding to this application? Should it be approved?
I don't know that there's a need to, I mean.
Joe, look, I'm looking for your help on this.
Oh, well, you know, in, in, actually, to be honest, it's been a long time since we've done a couple of these. And Bob, it might have been one of the last ones, you know, before he renewed it. But not only does Planning and Zoning have a lot of this covered, which I had mentioned earlier, it's already in Planning and Zoning, and I, I know that Judy, talking to Judy, they tried to update that to keep it current, so. Pretty well already in what we have.
Okay, I repeat the same question to you, Tyler. Are there conditions that you see that should be put in here from a legal standpoint to protect the county's interests?
I don't think that's a legal question, Jerry, but, no, I don't. I think our zoning regulations cover everything that probably legally needed to be covered, and I don't really have an opinion beyond that.
Thank goodness we had people that came before us that had the wherewithal and the foresight to identify these issues, and they included it in these requirements. I just wanna make sure the landowner knows about that responsibility, and it's been enumerated with them, so. I thought maybe they, I think we have a landowner here.
Yes.
Let's have something come up. Mr. Sterns or Ruth, you wanna come up, please?
Morning, Gary.
Good morning, Gary.
Gary Sterns.
Gary, have you had a chance to see, have, have you read at all any of our planning and zoning?
No, I did not.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit a couple of highlights, and there's a lot of other areas, okay? And then I'm gonna ask Judy a question, but a couple of things that were brought to our attention is, uh, this is under sand and gravel, mineral, rock, soil extraction, and quarries, and Boro. This would be section eight oh six one I, and it says, "Cost for damage to the county roads or bridges used for the access to the site, which requires additional maintenance or repair for the normal county maintenance," and I wonder if that should be from or for, "or repair as a result of additional traffic generated shall be the responsibility of the owner of the property from which the soil is being removed." I.e., you tear the roads up, you have to fix them. That's bottom line of, that's what that's saying. Uh, "Determination of the cost and method of repair and maintenance shall be described or prescribed by the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent, Jason. The property owner may appeal the superintendent's decision." Jason says, "We did this," or "It was that bad, you can come to the board and say, I don't think so, and this is the reason." So it says, "May, uh, appeal the superintendent's decision to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners within thirty days after receiving the superintendent's decision." So he would contact you and say, hey, you, we blew out a big chunk of this road, or something to that effect. This is J. It says, "The owner of the property shall obtain adequate insurance to cover any damages which may occur as a result of the operation, and she'll assume the liability for any damages. A copy of such insurance or other proof of such insurance shall be submitted to the planning administrator's office prior to issuing a conditional use permit to Judy." Then the last thing it says, "To assure all of these conditions are met by the owner, a bond contingent upon the size of the operation, removal, or extraction may be required to be posted with the county." Those are, those are three of the, to me, bigger requirements on that thing, and I wanted to make sure, just as Kit and some other people, that you were aware of that.
But how can you put it all on us if we carry the road up? We've got grain trucks coming up the road at the same time. We're not gonna be, and we shouldn't be responsible for all of it, you know what I mean? There's other traffic going on that road besides these guys. They're not gonna, from the point they come out of the field to the highway, they're not gonna be running thirty mile an hour, 'cause it's a short span. I don't think you need to blame it all on me for tearing up the roads, 'cause they're not that great right now, 'cause they're cracked all. You go out and take a look at them.
No, I, I realize, Gary.
But I don't want, I, you know, I, just like you, I can't afford to come up with a million dollars to fix the roads. What do you guys pay for? You're responsible for some, aren't you?
Well, I, I think that's where we're at right now in this discussion amongst us, okay?
Yeah, I don't think I'm responsible for the whole road. Sure, we're gonna have, sure, you know it, we're gonna have potholes. We all know it in this room. But I don't want my neighbor to come over and tell me all this stuff, 'cause they're tearing it up too.
Yeah.
And I think Jason's input that the road, you know, has probably only got five years of lifespan left in it with normal use.
We might wanna go take a look, 'cause I don't know if it does.
Yeah, so I, I think.
We'd have to probably, if we're gonna get down to that point, maybe have some poor samples and things like that, because to have somebody eyeballing, saying, well, you know, that's, I, I, I think something went to a port of law, it probably wouldn't go very far.
Might, maybe not.
You know, one person said, well, he thought it, you know.
Yeah, and Gary, this isn't about your project, this is about the history of this. They haven't done a good job, in my opinion, 'cause I was impacted directly by the Cattlero project. And county road superintendent said we shouldn't allow that without conditions. Allowed it without conditions, essentially. So it's not about your project, 'cause I want, I want, I want you to be able to sell them the dirt, want the project to move forward, but we have to make these points. We have to discuss this. This is when we discuss this, at this point, 'cause it's a ten-year deal. So it's not, it's not, it's not anything on your project, okay? It's knowing the history of this, 'cause I lived it, with the Cattlero's fiasco, and that's what it was, it was a fiasco. We had time and equipment up there multiple days a week, tied up, because we didn't do it right the first time. And as I was advised at the time, we could have had some help from that, that entity that did in fact create a majority of that traffic. To your point, I agree. You have a great point, that it's not all on you, that's okay. But you have to understand, this is, we're doing our due diligence right now, and we have to talk about it.
And why I wanted a ten-year is, why, if, a year, he's not done. He needs twenty more loads.
I have no problem with a ten-year.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, right. I wouldn't have any, personally wouldn't have any problem with a ten-year permit, no.
That's kind of why that's put on there. I hate to have him not finish his project and eat twenty, thirty loads.
Exactly.
And we haven't allowed him for even longer than ten years in the past, but, you know, this reminds me of when, uh, there was a little feeding operation that went in about twenty miles south of town, ten, twenty years ago, I don't even know when it was. That was a, a gravel road that we paved, the county paved that portion, and we knew that the truck traffic coming in there was. There was, there's a ton of truck traffic on that. And that was not made a condition that they, that we say, well, it's got ten years, 'cause it paved road. We didn't do anything, because we knew that that's, that's agriculture, you know? A little bit different because of conditional use and the mining, but I, I am very sensitive to somehow coming up with some kind of a fair sharing of responsibilities. And when we talk about insurance, Judy, I don't know, because I'm not one that's applied. I wonder if anyone, well, they would have had to, I guess, they must have posted an insurance with you or a bond in the past. Can you even get this insurance, number one? And could you address that a little bit, Judy, how that might work?
Uh, we can refer to Van Kirk, but more than likely, they have insurance covering any damage that they would contribute to that. Gary's property, he's gonna have, of course, property insurance. Um, the bond... The bond is a, may be required to do a bond. In the past, we have not made that a requirement. There is a difference between may and shall, and Trevor can correct me if I'm wrong, or Tyler, sorry.
Trevor.
Trevor. But there is a difference between may and shall, so we have not historically required a bond be put in there. You'll see that same thing with conditional uses for solar farms and things like that. There is the option of requiring a bond if you want to.
I don't have any problem with that. That's what I would hope would be the situation, but this is owner. That would have to be something between Gary and Van Newkirk that says, "Hey, Van Newkirk, if I have to carry it, you're gonna pay for this thing and you're gonna do these things, not me, brother." So I just wanted that conversation to be out there and have people be aware of it because it doesn't say the contractor.
Right, it does say the owner.
It's his responsibility, so, you know, I can see where Van Newkirk could say, "Hey, sorry, Gary, that was part of your responsibility when we bought this. We're not gonna go any insurance." So that's, it's a discussion finding this out now that you might want to have a fifteen-second sidebar to make sure you're covered on this thing.
Yeah. And the other thing too, more than likely, if this does get approved for staying open for ten years, and I can't predict the future a hundred percent, North Platte and Lincoln County has not had a project of this magnitude, ever.
That's an important point.
So more than likely, his next project is gonna be something where somebody's gonna come in and get two loads, three loads, not a hundred loads. So, you know, the impact of anything other, this first year, there's gonna be a huge impact. There's gonna be a huge impact with traffic. There's gonna be safety concerns, which did come out with at the Planning Commission, that there are safety concerns. But that's gonna be for the timeframe that this project is going. The next project, more than likely, is not, you're not even gonna notice.
Gary, do you want to, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, if I'm out of line, please let me go, but do you want to take a second? Do you have these bases covered with the contractor or not?
I could talk to him. I think we do, but I would like to talk to him.
Okay, because before we vote on this, I want you to know the onus is on you, so if you have any questions, I think this board would be willing to give you thirty seconds to make sure you're covered. And if not, it's up to you. I see the other half of the operation after having that conversation. Because if you aren't aware of these, that's a big deal.
Well, that's the thing. That's the thing. I don't, I'm not trying to put it all on me. It's just, you're aware.
It should be on the contractor anywhere, whoever's doing it.
I agree.
You know, maybe we learned something, maybe, maybe in the future that might say owner slash contractor, one or the other, just as a wording down the road. You might ask Stephen and Judy if that needs attention.
Actually, that all falls on the...
It's on Tyler.
Oh, it does.
He's changed hats.
I'm no longer welcome in district court, so.
Due to a conflict of interest that would exist.
The judge, the recent judge appointment.
Yes, please.
And Tyler, I do apologize for calling you the wrong way. So I just heard you talking about maybe changing that to owner.
Well, owner slash contractor or something.
Ultimately, anytime you're doing anything on a piece of property, and please jump in if I'm wrong, it's always the owner's responsibility, no matter what it is. So they can have an agreement, but it's ultimately always the owner's responsibility. And any building permit, any conditional use, anything, it always falls back to the owner. And so, I mean, we can change it, but...
I don't care who takes out the policy or cares for it, as long as the owner is listed as an additional insurer. As long as they have coverage.
Gotcha.
We may want to update the zoning regulations to allow for that for lack of what they need.
Price money just went up seven cents a yard.
That's fair. They're staying south of the power line.
Judy?
Yes.
Question. How much quantity of dirt was to come out of this particular farm site?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know that for sure. I know that they are predicting three months. They're hoping to only haul dirt for three months. I know they originally said, you know, for a year. And they are saying something like a hundred loads a day. And that's every day, five days a week.
Total yards needed.
I do not know that answer.
Over a million.
Total yards needed for this project?
Well, it's, I am still not completely, but about nine hundred thousand, a little bit probably.
And eighty percent will come out of this location.
Yeah, I'm planning about seven or eight years. And that depends on the law. We're still wondering with all that, with all that. We go down deeper, it's gonna be more, and then they even talked about adding, getting up out of the bottom a little higher, adding two feet to the top of the surface.
So what was your figure on that?
Total?
Nine hundred.
Darren Helbusch, twenty-four, twenty-three, West Anna Green on the rest of Banker, bro. As far as the road responsibility, I guess, question is, if we're gonna put the contractor, the owner on the hook for this, I guess, what are we talking? It sounds like it's kind of open-ended. If the road doesn't hold up, does that mean we didn't pay for a three-inch overlay? Or does that mean we're paying for patches in the asphalt? Or?
Repair.
Just repair.
Repair maintenance. And I wanted to make that pretty clear to Mr. Sterns. There's nothing in this regulation that will require the county to have you pay for an overlay. We can't do it. And if we try to do it, we're gonna lose. It says repair.
I don't see how, why the landowner, why I would be responsible for the roads.
It's the conditional use, Mr. Sterns. Agricultural example, farm-to-market, all the grain trucks, that is a primary intended use for a transitional ag zone. A street mining operation is a conditional use. I don't like the regulations any more than anybody else, but that is what they are.
Lincoln and Lincoln County are the kind, the only two kinds in the state that I've ever had to deal with conditional use permit or borrow pit. All my other borrow pits, all I have to do, I go through state. I go through historical, game parks, Corps of Engineers, and it goes through the state, gets approved, and that's it. I've never, I know Lincoln has conditional use permits for borrow pit, no matter private, local municipality or state. And I'm not against it, I'm just saying, it is all kind of new and this is the first time I've ever heard of the insurance and the bond and all the responsibility falling back on either one of those.
So Tyler, repair to the state that the road is currently in, correct?
It doesn't say that.
That's right. Thank you.
So there is a lot of gray area in this where both the landowner and the county can be good partners.
Would be my hope.
So yes, that, I believe that's why there's the provision in there to allow the highway superintendent to make the assessment, and then if the landowner disagrees with the assessment, the extent of the damage, the numbers of patches or cracks, anything like that, come back before the board and say, "I don't agree. Here's why." That's why that is built in there.
And so let me suggest, because it is a gray area, let me suggest perhaps some common ground that we can discuss, okay? Just discussion. Let's say that halfway through this process, you blow out a chunk of concrete that's two foot by three and a half foot, two foot by two foot, and another one up there a foot, another one up there a foot. To me, then that says, as soon as, as soon as possible, I don't know who has asphalt then, might be a cold mix, I mean, you might not have a plant set up then. So we might have to take our little portable pot and go out, and maybe the county works together with you, maybe we sell it to you, maybe we sell you our labor and material, I don't know, to try to get that road repaired at your cost, working with us. Maybe that's five hundred bucks, maybe it's two thousand bucks. That's how I'm seeing this thing work. And that's only me. Now, I might be totally out wet, but it is repair of the road.
But if it's two thousand dollars per site and we have twenty blowouts, it starts adding up. If it's in December, what can we repair with rock? I mean, where are you gonna find hot mix?
Then, I'm talking too much. Sterns are great friends of mine, but my answer to you when I used to sit back where Mr. Chairman is sitting is, well, you know, I'm sorry, it is a tough deal, but you know, it was your responsibility when you came before, like, planning and zoning, to get a conditional use permit, to know what was in that conditional use permit. I mean, that's a standard red tape, big government answer, but it really is true, you know? So I'm just trying to work out something that we can all live with and make sure you understand that we're not overlaying roads and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Just discussion.
I agree with you totally, Joe. This has to be some sort of an amenable sort of a dilemma that we're in. The county needs advancement and development. We would be remiss if we did not approve the project where this fill is going. There are some folks that probably don't like that sort of a business in town. That's neither here nor there. It's been approved, it's gonna happen, looks to me like, and this fill is needed. We need to work out some sort of a mutually acceptable agreement here. I'm with Joe. I've worked with this family for some time and their honesty and reputation is beyond reproach.
Agreed.
They will do whatever has to be done, I'm certain. We have to find some sort of a reasonable approach here.
Because I'd hate to have you burying me with a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would too.
And Bob Long, same way. We can't...
Well, Bob's got the money. I mean, Gary, that's not...
But the other side of the coin is, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent, but the other side of the coin is there are somewhere close to thirty-six thousand residents in this county and all of them have some part in paying for what Jason brings to us is what roads need to be repaired, equipment he needs to have. So we have to think about the entire county, but we've got to also think about the growth of this county, and this project is just one of those. And I'm in favor of this conditional use permit, but we just have to find some way to work around this that's mutually agreeable.
Is there any way, unbeknownst to all of us, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen on the road or anything else. Is there any way we can set a maximum dollar amount, I don't know, three-way partnership or something? Because it's just that, that infinity of it is, like you said, we don't know what we're looking at. We don't know.
We don't either.
We know. But live by the sword, die by the sword, I guess, kind of risk for all, but I agree, that's what Gary's talking about too. We have no idea if we're talking, a good example is what he mentioned, you know, we might have two or three or four smaller incidents where that, that's affordable. But if something catastrophic happens, we lose half the road or something, we don't have it, of course, in our budget, you know, Gary doesn't have it in his budget, and I think some of it would be fall back on the county somewhere. I don't know, I know it's difficult to put it...
Now, we gotta have it for growth, that's what we're going for. We know we gotta have it. You can't vote something like this down.
No, Gary, I agree. I want to support it as well. I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah, I do, but I don't want to be buried. That's why something needs to be made.
But it's already in the reg. It's in the reg for the conditional use. It was there, I don't know how many years ago that it was put in there. So it's there. I just want to make sure you were aware of it as a landowner. That's why I brought it up. And I don't, I agree, I can get your point about an open-ended checkbook, that's, but I don't think our superintendent is intending that, he's just pointing out that he's gonna be wearing tear.
Yeah, it needed to be brought to the attention.
Yes, absolutely. We have, Mr. Long would like to add to this part of...
Stand here, come up there.
Come up and...
Gary, bring a chair.
Mr. Long, if you could state your name for the record. Well, I got three hundred percent. Oh, Robert Long, one hundred, Long Drive, North Platte.
Thank you.
Good morning, Robert.
Pardon?
Good morning.
Good morning. And I thank you, all of you, for having the time for us here because I see we're running over. This is something very serious that we are in discussion right now. It looks like the county got the gold mine and Gary and I got the shaft, is what it's looking like right now. There is, like he says, there is no way. I've never even heard of an insurance company, and I'm sure that Devon here, the work that he has done, has never came across anything like this. It's just, and I don't know what the heck, but to me, I'll just back out of it and I, if that's what it comes to, I think Gary might be thinking the same way. And so there goes your beefpacking plant down the drain. Because I don't know where else they're gonna get the dirt and stuff, and they're gonna have the same thing.
I know, that's not, that's really not the reason this is brought up. It's point, I'm just pointing out, so as a landowner, you know, this is already in the regs. And Gary wasn't aware of it, so I didn't know if you were.
No, absolutely not.
So it's there. We didn't put it there, it's there.
I would think, you know, the regs, but they need to be changed. If that's, if they're already in there, they ought to be deleted out.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be bound by them if we approve this as this, because they're intact and they're there. So, I mean, any...
But, you know, I'm not a lawyer by no means and...
But I just want you to be aware, it's there. I'm not, we're not against the project. We're good.
So apparently...
We've been down, I've been down this as a citizen.
Yeah, yeah, like I say.
I know all about the damage and mitigation challenges with higher traffics to a new endeavor, but, or this is a temporary thing. I, I'm not, I shouldn't use the word overblown, but I think maybe the, it is a little bit overblown. I don't think the expense is gonna be that significant and it's gonna go, it's gonna have this huge ebb and then it's gonna, the flow's gonna drop off, as Judy pointed out. Gary's project or his site a year from now might be forty loads a year. So it's not gonna be, it's just this flash in the pan, so to speak, okay? So I hope you can put that in perspective because...
Well, yeah, but it's still, I don't know, what happens if, you know, something happens to a bridge? We're gonna have to replace a bridge or something.
Chairman, if I might, it's a little bit out of order, but I want to try to get this thing a resolution, as we all do.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a call to somebody in the insurance business anyway here, and I'm gonna say, "Does this insurance exist? We're talking a million bucks or whatever. What kind of cost are we talking?" I'm gonna try that, okay, if that's okay? Just so we can all know that, yeah, it's out there, we just gotta get it or whatever.
Apparently, there has been no enforcement of this prior to conditional use permit, say for Mr. Long or Mr. Sterns. They both had active borrow pits. I know they hold the Walmart, they hold in the town, so there was nothing could be said or done previous or status quo, I take it, until they reached this point of the conditional use.
Yeah, and sir, a little bit of a history, it wasn't too long ago that this board decided to bring the final approval of conditional use permits to this board, an elected board, instead of the Planning Commission, because of this issue with roads. This board is the one that answers to the folks that have to pay the five million dollar bond for service of roads.
Tanner?
Or more.
I'm in a, actually, I'm in a public meeting, I'm a board of commissioner, and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, and before I do that, I want to tell you what we're talking about. We have an issue before us concerning hauling field dirt over county roads, both paved and unpaved roads, and we have two owners of the property and the contractor here. And in our planning and zoning regulations, it says that the owner needs to be responsible for any damage to the roads. It's kind of an open-ended question. And it also says that they may or may not post a bond. that they may or may not post a bond. It says they're supposed to have insurance to cover these kinds of things. I'm going to really put you on the spot. Think a minute because I'm going to turn this speakerphone on, okay? And I'm going to see if you can address if that insurance even exists, okay? I'm going to put you on right now, Tanner. No pressure. Okay, so, can you hear me, Tanner?
Yes, I can hear you, Joe.
Okay, you're on, my friend.
Tanner, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yep. Tanner Patera. Do you want my address? 3821 Trigger Bay Court, North Platte.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead.
The question in play is, will the owner's insurance pay for damage to the roads?
Can they get such insurance?
So insurance will pay for sudden, like, regular, what we consider casually insurance pays for sudden accidental loss to property of any kind. So building, roads, et cetera. So, I mean, the truck catches on fire, burns the concrete, or the State Farm Road, the policy pays for that. If we're looking for coverage that, hey, we're going to haul, I don't know, 1,000 loads of dirt across the road, is that going, and there's damage to the road because of the additional use? I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know if an insurance company would consider that a sudden and accidental occurrence, because it's going to be done over a period of, I mean, what are we talking here, like, a couple months?
Say three or four months, just for example.
Yeah. Yeah, wear and tear, insurance is not designed to pay for wear and tear. Insurance is paid for, I mean, like you said, sudden and accidental occurrences. I mean, to rebuild a road, the only time I've ever seen a road paid for is an incident where, I mean, there's an accident and the road is damaged by fire. Or, I didn't insure, but years ago, a semi hit that overpass by Big Springs and the overpass had to be replaced. I mean, that's a sudden accidental occurrence. To pay to rebuild the road because somebody drove on it because of traffic pattern changes, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what policy would pay for that. I mean, the truck insurance that the gentleman that would be hauling the dirt would pay for the sudden accidental. But the damage or wear over time, that is a question that I can't, I mean, without reviewing the specific policy or doing a little more research, I am not 100% sure if that can be covered.
You know what? As a spur of the moment, Senator Tanner, I think you've done a terrific job. I'm going to see if there's anybody else on this board that might have any other questions of you.
No.
Tanner, thank you for taking this call. And you've helped us, I think, a lot. I appreciate the help, my friend.
If anybody has any questions, just give me a call.
Thank you. So, Tyler, moving along. What happens if we pass approval of this, waiving those sections, stating that if, in fact, they can get insurance for it, okay? Because at this time, it doesn't appear they can, but we'll do some checking, or maybe we could ask you to follow up and do some checking. And if, in fact, it can be insured, that would be, we could come back and put that as an amendment to this motion. I'm just asking, because that's pretty tough to have somebody to get in that situation. I know that, I'll leave it at that. That's just discussion.
I wouldn't come back and attach more conditions. You've already granted it.
Right.
So you can attach it as a conditional condition, so to speak. If they can obtain it, fine. If they can't obtain it, the board's waived it. But we can't come back after you issued the permit and put on more conditions.
Thank you.
To your point, Joe, I would, I'm inclined to approve the permits as is. I just, again, I want the landlords to know. It's within the regs that we're here last week and last year. That language is there. It's been there all this time. And obviously, they didn't know it was there. It's there.
I think a key point is the determination of the costs and the method of repair and maintenance shall be prescribed by the Lincoln County Super High, or the highway superintendent. There gives a lot of discretion to the county as far as what is determined to be the damage and the cost. I don't think anybody on this board wants to see the Sustainable Beef Project fail or not even take off. I don't think anybody on this board wants to see loss of potential business or revenue to these property owners here. We are putting everything out on the table. We're having this discussion because it's important information that needs to be considered. But I want there to be an understanding that we're all on the same side in this conversation. We all want to see the overall success and development of The fact that, in my background in insurance, this, especially Section J of, Section 8.06 1J, the owner of the property shall obtain adequate insurance to cover any damages. I agree with Tanner. I don't know that that's a peril that can be covered, just from my experience in the insurance industry.
I suspect the purpose of J was to provide liability insurance for any damages that occur on the property or to neighboring properties and not for roads.
That I would totally concur with. I think that's why owner's in there.
Especially now having heard from the insurance broker that insurance to cover damaged roads literally doesn't exist. That clearly could not have been meant to cover the roads.
Okay.
And if it was, that was a mistake.
So for the record, we're not looking for insurance. I want to have this discussion. Are we requiring insurance for those specific purposes of damage to the property and neighboring properties, and that is not meant to be for the roads?
Yeah, it's just for property, not for the road.
I believe it is intended to cover accident liability on premises, so the landowner's covered. If they roll an excavator off a cut onto a truck and two people die, I think the idea is that the applicant for the conditional use has coverage for that. If you get a four-inch rain and the entire side of, you know, the open side of the cut goes down on the neighbor's pasture, I think there's insurance for that. There's no insurance for victim of violence.
So, and I think that this may go right to what you're saying. Because we said, talked about sudden and whatever occurrence. A truck hits our bridge, just like down there. You have insurance for that. That's covered. That's a sudden, you know. So I can see where that would happen, damage. But under the parameters that insurance covers, you know, like you said, it's a sudden event, run into a bridge, not our fault. That's how, as long as we can have that understanding, I think we're, that makes a lot of difference hearing from somebody, you know, this insurance doesn't exist. And it only exists under these conditions if it's sudden and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No. And to follow up with that in a continuation.
Would you confuse amendments?
Van Kirk, your organization is willing to work with our road department in some sort of a reasonable manner for significant damage, not just wear and tear, I would be, I'd be all in favor of proceeding on with this and with that kind of a gentleman's agreement.
Yeah, and we've, you know, bringing up the bridge, we've had some incidences where older bridges failed, you know, on our dime, kind of on our haul. And we've had to replace it with a box culvert. It's part of our insurance, I mean, that pays for it. That is a sudden occurrence that happened, no matter what the condition, where the bridge failed. It doesn't matter if we're overweight or it had two foot of dirt on the deck or whatever, it just failed. So it happened to be while we were there crossing the bridge, so that did fall upon us. Kind of the same thing, I think, with the road. If we destroy a road because we're overweight or we're just abusive in any way, I think that should be on us.
Or like they said, fire, you catch on fire, diesel catches on fire, leaks all over, burns the road, ruins the road, melts all the asphalt, that's on you, sudden.
That'd be typical insurance coverage that we would have within, in-house, because we have, I mean, we do, because we have incidents like that.
Yeah, and I think that's all in the interest of, we're a livestock-friendly community, our county, whether it's officially designated and set or not, it should be, because agriculture is still a very major part of the economy of this county. And we have to proceed with what's best for the county. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm all in favor of approving this conditional use permit with that understanding about, as Joe mentioned, some of the obvious insurance that is covered by your organization.
Right.
Property owner's insurance and a working agreement between the excavator and the road department as far as fixing major, significant road damages.
Let me just add that the key to our profitability is our production. If that road goes to pieces and slows my guys down, I go from 1.5 loads an hour. I can't afford that either, so I'm going to do what I have to enhance that road back to the condition it was in, so I keep my hauls going, so I keep that fluidity of my volume of dirt going. I suffer just as much if I don't repair them. I mean, I'm talking about, you know, blowouts or whatever, too. I mean, it's just part of business. We know that. And we've had to address that before on gravel roads, even.
Well, you have a grader out there to work on the gravel road.
Yeah, and we're going to keep the dust down on that. And we'll have a motor grader, I can't say designated for that, but it will be up in the borrow pit, between the borrow pit, gravel road, and if we need it, two on the site. But I think mostly we'll do it on the site. So our gravel road, the portion of that, we've taken into heavy consideration.
Is that a motion?
Can I say one more thing? According to the water, you guys, they're worried about the water runoff. As you know, as maybe you don't know, these two natural draws in that pasture that have come all the way, they'll come through Peeper's pivot. They put the pivot in there. So if we get six inches of rain and it comes down through that draw and goes through there and they're mad, well, that's a natural draw from four miles up. She's all coming down through there, because that's why that bridge is in there. So they need to know that, too. They can be flooded out, but it might not be from us. That comes from two separate, all them draws, they come to the valley. I just want to say that, so they don't backtrack on us. But they, that pivot goes across a natural draw that goes right across the other road.
And we have had that exact same thing down in the southwest portion of the county about 20 years ago. Two landowners ended up going to court over it. And in fact, the court decided, not this board, just what you said, it was a natural waterway.
It's a natural waterway.
I would just like to say, early in this conversation today, somebody said, looks like sustainable beef is going to happen, but without the dirt from these two pits, sustainable beef probably isn't going to happen. And I think we're all interested in growing our community and working together to make that happen. So I personally am in favor of granting the conditional use permits. And I feel like we can work together, the county and the landowners, the Sterns family, you guys use those roads, too.
Sounds like a statement that would predicate a motion.
Sure. Let me find my, I've written on all of my pieces of paper here.
Wait, a public, we never opened a public hearing because it's not on our agenda for a public hearing. I opened up and allowed for public comment. It's literally just a discuss and consider on the agenda. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this, though, before I entertain a motion? Hearing none. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure? Do we have specific language that?
Yes, we do, and use it. Where is it? Over here.
Joe, also, based on the following factual findings, top of page two.
Yeah, don't forget that part.
Don't forget that part.
So do you want me to just read this?
Well, you don't need the whole thing, the whole thing.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'm going to cry. You guys help me out, okay? Actually, you're a better.
No, go ahead.
You're sure?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Gary and Ruth Sterns to allow a commercial strip mine operation on property located in a TA-1 transitional agricultural district and described as the northwest ... down here. Thank you. I told you I needed help. All right.
Make sure you're not using anything there, so it'll comply with the period.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to try it again.
Thank you.
I move to approve the application by Gary and Ruth Sterns for a traditional use permit to allow a commercial strip mine operation for 10 years, with the condition requiring that any disturbance of one acre or more requires a SWPPP plan, which stands for Stormwater Protection Plan, to be submitted to the city, to be submitted to the county for each project on property located at South Old Highway 83 and described as the northwest quarter and the south half, except portioned deed to the State of Nebraska in the warranty deed recorded April 2, 1943, in Book 81, page 565 of Section 25, Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lake County, Nebraska, and all elements of the application complied with, are complied with, period.
There's more after that. Top of the next page.
Top of the next page.
Boy, I'm glad I got the help. That was pretty good. Okay. Based on the following factual findings, to wit, the application complies with the current Lincoln County zoning regulations. The application complies with the current Lincoln County subdivision regulations. The application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County comprehensive plan and Lincoln County zoning map.
That's good. End of the motion. Motion by Hughley.
Second.
Second by Weems. Any further discussion?
I hope not.
Hearing none. Roll call votes, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Gary.
Your conditional use is approved. Moving on, we have another conditional use permit. This is for an application, considering an application by Mr. Robert Long for a conditional use permit to allow commercial strip mine operation on property located in a TA-1 transitional agricultural district and described as the northwest corner of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 29 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and the northeast quarter and east half, southeast corner and southwest quarter, southeast quarter of Section 24, Township 14 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 29 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County. Can we run on where that is located?
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator. Hopefully, this one's a little bit easier because it's going to be the same type of thing. This property is north of town. The last one was south of town. This one is completely in the county's jurisdiction, so the city had absolutely nothing to do with it. Again, the Lincoln County Planning Commission did hear this application on the 13th of September, and they did essentially. September, and they did essentially the same thing with this one as they did the last one, they granted the permit for 10 years with the condition that a SWP plan be submitted with any, or any removal of anything over an acre. It's required by state law, so that's something that both the city and the county follow, so that was the condition put on it. This property does have a little bit of a history, it was granted a conditional use permit a number of years ago, I think that permit expired in 2005 or 2006, after I did some digging and looked through, I didn't realize that there was one out there at the time, so they're just renewing that permit for an additional 10 years.
Okay.
Judy, your wording in here does not include the 10-year strip mine operation for this particular area.
Oh, I probably did not type that appropriately. The motion to approve, again, should say the same things, commercial strip mine operation for 10 years with the submission of the SWP.
Disturbance of one acre, same?
Yep, yep, same exact thing, I apologize, I was in a hurry when I did these, and I did that incorrectly.
That is the intent of this.
That was the intent, and that is exactly what the County Planning Commission did at their meeting, was they did provide that with that condition on there. Same exact as the last one.
Okay, any other questions for Judy? Okay, thank you, Judy. As with the other conditional use, I will open this up for public comment under the same auspices of the last agenda item. Anybody wishing to speak, I ask that you keep your remarks concise as possible. At this point, is there anybody that would like to speak to this conditional use permit? Mr. Long?
Yes, Robert Long.
Good to see you again.
Pardon?
Good to see you again.
Been a long time. The only thing, I had a question when you was reading that, this conditional permit is not an extension from the one that expired, this is a new one.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
That was my question.
Yep.
Thank you.
We are clear.
Representative from Van Kirk's, please.
Darren Helvis, 24, 23, West Anna, Grand Island, Nebraska, Representative Van Kirk, Brothers Company.
Did I hear you say earlier that excavation and hauling would probably not be occurring from both spots at the same time?
I wouldn't think so, just due to the fact that it's gonna be material sensitive when we're hauling, what we're hauling, so I don't think we'll have a cross flow of material. In other words, we need a, if we're in the bottom and bridging an area or we, some over excess in parts of the building, we haul sand, we would haul sand completely as that task, and then go back and migrate to it. I can't promise you that, because there might be some incidences where we need a little bit here and there, but the majority of the hauls will be delegated to one or the other.
Okay, next question is, is what would be the route of transport from the site of excavation to where you're gonna be doing the fill?
You'll tell me, is it old school road out of the borrow pit, and then North Airport Road or Airport Road down to 30, 30 over to Newberry, that way.
Your trucks realize that sometimes that's blocked by.
Yeah, that's why we're not going that way very often, that and bridges under construction, too. It's identical haul distance-wise, but efficiency is not very good. And also, this borrow pit will not be pre-watered, so there's no issue with that. It's gonna encompass about a five-acre area because of the depth of that existing borrow pit. We'll have it signed like the other one, and we'll have an entrance. We did design a silk trap and some silk fence to the southeast of where that is being taken now, because it seems to be the flow. I don't think you have much runoff in that sandy material anyhow, but precautionary.
Will you be reseeding some of that area or not?
I'll have to get with Mr. Long on that, see what we do, because, you know, it's got an abrupt face, so when you get done, it's gonna have another abrupt face, there's really not much to reclaim there, not like on the other side.
So did you say that your trucks will stay to the prescribed travel path, or if your drivers get tired of getting caught by trains at the tracks, will they reroute?
No, I don't.
Down hall school road?
I can't speak for trucks very well, but, no, the.
They will be encouraged to stay to that?
They will be told, yes.
Told is much different than encouraged.
Like I said, I don't, but I can't imagine going some way or direction, I actually didn't say that, but I wouldn't think they would, but I've been surprised before.
And how many yards of dirt do you anticipate bringing out of that site?
Oh, it'll be close to 200,000, probably. At least that's what my calculations were to begin with, that's where the five acres, I think it's 5.6 acres.
And that's on what kind of a timeframe, hopefully?
That, again, will vary where we need that material. There's a series of stormwater ponds and areas that they maintain their own drainage on the site, which that'll have to be dirt, because they'll wanna retain the water, so we can't use sand, but it's gonna be, I guess, kinda decided as we progress, depending on the, on the winter, depending on the weather, depending on what we find out in the bottom, we've dug a couple holes down there already, depends on the water table, different things, too.
Any other questions?
May have none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Much appreciated. Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding those conditional use permits? Colleagues of mine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, I move to approve the application by Robert Long for a conditional use permit to allow the commercial strip mine operation for 10 years with condition requiring that any disturbance of one acre or more requires an SWPPP to be submitted to the county for each project on property located in a Q1A transitional agricultural district and described as the northwest quarter of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 29 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and the northeast quarter and south half, southeast quarter of, and, excuse me, and southwest quarter, southeast quarter of Section 28, Township 14, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 14, Range 29 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Is that the correct location, Judy?
Want to clarify that?
I haven't.
Yeah, I had a different.
I have a different legal, so let's clarify that.
Not correct.
The legal should be northwest section of 19, 19 Township 14 North, Range 29 West of the 6th PM.
It says southwest quarter. This language is part of the southwest quarter of Section 19.
I heard completely different language.
You don't think Tatlin would mind if you took some of their dirt down below, do you leave reading these legals?
I have on this.
When you were reading that, I wasn't following the law or anything with what you were saying.
Yeah, that should exactly be right.
I just heard him say 28.
Yeah, mine says 24. Do yours say 24?
Yeah.
Section 24, yeah.
I heard 28.
Oh, it's 24.
I may have missed look, if I did, I apologize for that. So I'll be back up to Section 24, then Township 14 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 29 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and all elements of the application are complied with. Based on the following factual findings to wit, the application applies with current Lincoln County zoning regulations, the application applies with current Lincoln County subdivision regulations, and the application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and Lincoln County zoning map.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
Okay. That conditional use is approved. Moving on to the next item, which is discuss and consider a request by Fairway Estates Homeowners Association Incorporated to accept dedication and adoption of Fairway Estates' road, Fairway Avenue, Fairway Drive, and Clubhouse Drive as shown on Campbell Estates' first subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, our past precedent already set, this was set for 9:30, does that not have to occur within one hour, because, 10:30, does our time not out? Oh, no, okay, I can check.
Joe, I know where you live.
Just listen, check.
And there are so many unemployed comedians.
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator.
Thank you, Judy.
This item was on the County Planning Commission on Tuesday, September 13th, at 5:30, 2022. So what happened at that meeting is they did make a recommendation to approve and adopt, so they were forwarding a recommendation to you, a positive recommendation. There were a lot of concerns with the roads, but they did feel that you guys are the ones with the purse strings, so that should ultimately be your decision, they didn't feel like they should be denying it at that level, so it was approved, recommended for approval. There was a little bit of discussion, too, for full disclosure, if you look at the subdivision, and I know it's very, very tiny, tiny, tiny print, it does say under there, when it was originally presented, that these roads would be private, they would be maintained by the Homeowners Association. However, do you want me to stop for a minute?
Just a quick second.
Hang on, let's clear the hallway.
Thank you, Tyler.
So anyway, on that original plat that was filed back in 2001, there is, under the notices where the owner signs at the time, which was Larry Campbell, it does state that these were private roads, they would be maintained by the Homeowners Association. Now, Lincoln County Planning Commission, Lincoln County zoning does not enforce covenants, but there was covenants placed on that property also that said that after a certain length of time, and I don't have the document in front of me, I do apologize, June may have it, but after a certain length of time, if 75% of the homeowners members wanted to have the road dedicated to, it didn't specifically say Lincoln County, it said any entity, that they could petition to do that. I believe it was 75% after 20 years, maybe it was 80% after 10 years, but I don't have that document in front of me.
It was nine years, up to 20 years.
Okay. So just, so you have all the information at hand. Again, they did make the recommendation, Planning Commission did make the recommendation to approve, and again, there was a lot of discussion on budgetary constraints for Lincoln County roads. That's all I have, do you have any questions?
Judy, you said originally this was set up that the property owners were aware this was their problem, their road, not the county.
If anybody, and I know it's, it's really tough, a lot of times, being property owners, property owners have to do their own diligence, title companies are supposed to help them when they buy a piece of property, they should have been given a copy of that that did say that these were private roads. Now, whether that happened or didn't happen, I can't tell you.
Right. Since I wasn't at the discussion, I'll ask, maybe it's an obvious answer, but I noticed that there was some points, key issues, that the road does not have the proper, lack of another word, crown.
So I made some.
Or a dedicated ditch for water.
Yep, so I made some observations when I went out and took a look at it, plus I also attached the current subdivision standards. Now, these current subdivision standards were not the subdivision standards that were in place in 2001. These were put into place in 2012. Now, they're not a whole lot different, but there could have been a few differences in that, in what was required. So I put in a copy of the current standards. When I went out there and took a look at it, it didn't look like there was sufficient crown, didn't look like there were sufficient ditches for drainage, but in the regulations, it does say that those can be waived as long as the county road superintendent allows that to be waived.
I see, okay, that's very good, thank you.
I do have, we opened with Larry Campbell establishing this, and on the plat, it does say that it was his intention to establish it as a private road, and that in the minutes from the July 10th, 2001, Planning Commission meetings, there is a note that says Larry Campbell applicant was present, he will take care of the roads for now and turn them over to the Homeowners Association once it is big enough for them to take care of.
Correct.
And in my conversations with the Homeowners Association, it said it was their understanding in the conditions of the Homeowners Association and the agreement that Larry Campbell had with the county, that they could at some point decide to dedicate the roads to the county. That doesn't mean the county has to take them, but that they can, I think in Section 4, it says before 20 years, 90% of the homeowners have to be in agreement, and after 20 years, 75% of the homeowners should be in agreement.
And I do believe you have a document with signatures that basically states that they're all in agreement to dedicate it.
And that's part of the paperwork that you gave us.
Yep. Okay.
Very good. I mean, there is a long history of the Homeowners Association trying to get their roads dedicated to the county. They came to me probably nine, 10 months ago, and I've amassed a lot of information, this, this file is strictly about subdivisions, and this file here also. And just for a little bit of the backstory, or the total picture of Lincoln County subdivision, near as I can tell, Lincoln County has approximately 30 subdivisions with approximately 30 miles of roads. We do already accept responsibility and maintain 22 miles of that 30. 13 of those miles are pavement, eight of them are gravel. We don't maintain nine miles total, and of those nine miles, two are pavement and seven are gravel. Of those two miles, we don't accept responsibility for currently, 1.1 miles is in Campbell's estate or otherwise known as Fairway Estates. So it looks like we have a history of accepting and supporting our taxpayers by assisting them with their roads. And I do know, and we've had a lot of conversations in this room, and I think Tyler brought some information to us that I felt was very impactful for my decision. Tyler, I'm gonna ask if you'd like to share that.
Long story short, there is, there's a Nebraska statute that comes right out and says, if the roads are built to county spec, that's the specs set by the county board, and they are dedicated to the public, the county shall take them and maintain them. That's it, I don't care what their covenant say about 75% or 90% ownership, that's an internal deal. ownership, that's an internal deal. If the board finds that the roads are built to spec, and I would assume you would ask your highway superintendent about that, then you have to take them, we have to take them and maintain them, end of story.
Judy, do you have anything else to add to that? That was pretty succinct.
Um, I would have to defer to Jason about these roads being built to county standards, and if they are not, if they were in two thousand and one, if he recommends, you know, yeah, they're good, no, they're not, because it does also puts most of the, um, decision-making on to Jason, and I apologize, but it does say in the code also that if they do not meet standards, he can waive those standards, so.
Oh.
Guess it's on his shoulders.
Put the monkey on his back, poor guy.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Okay, Jason.
Um, yeah, so I think the, there has been documentation from, I believe an engineer, whenever it was built, that the, the roadway section was built to standards. Um, it shows to be holding up very well in its current use for the previous, what, twenty, twenty-one years? Um, the only thing that is concerned, I guess, from the roads department would be the, the drainage issues, so there does not appear to be any, um, drainage in some areas, um, with some of it actually sloping back to the roadway, and...
So speak to that, because that's the problem we have in Hillcrest when that was, um, adopted many, many moons ago, and there's many numerous drainage issues there that can't be addressed now unless you tiled that and directionally board that to get that water away. And so if you talk about that, if you elaborate on that part...
Well, and it, yeah, and I guess just to say too, it doesn't appear that there's any, there's, there's no major problems that are arising right now from the way everything is right now. So even given that there's not the proper drainage per the standards, it doesn't seem that there's any, uh, problems that are ongoing with that right now. Um, but to, I think given the, the right of way that's there, or that would be there if it was adopted, um, there is room to put in proper drainage at some point if it was ever deemed necessary, that would just be at a pretty significant cost to do that.
To that point, um, Hill, you know, Hillcrest, again, using that for the laboratory, um, a lot of the homeowners get upset when the county comes in and does, does what they have to do to mitigate issues with roads overlay, so, um, uh, what do you call it, top, top dress, those kind of things, and we're damaging, uh, their landscaping, but they're technically on the right of way. And so you, and you wanna be a good citizen and steward to the homeowners, but at the same time, it's gotta be some give and take, so would it make some sense to address this today if we were to approve this? So that we don't have somebody, we're not kicking the can down the road as far as water issues or...
If, if we were going to correct the drainage issues or...
Subdivision, do we put a stipulation if it says, we, we recognize as a homeowner that we're gonna do what we need to do to mitigate drainage and approve it, you've acknowledged that maybe it's not what it should be, or it's not an issue at all?
I can tell you just by going out there, they have sprinklers in the right of way, they have landscaping in the right of way, landscaping...
Well, I saw that note, I saw that note in the narrative.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes there, but I would definitely make sure that the homeowners understand that if you do take it, there's probably gonna be damage to their property.
No, no.
It's not our property.
It's the right of way.
Right, it's our, it's our property, it's right of way, yes.
And to that point, Jason, you said that if something is deemed to need to have some drainage, uh, ditch, uh, some culverts put in, is that the county's expense or the landowner's expense, neighboring landowner?
So anything, well, I guess it depends on how it's adopted, correct? So if the board finds that the roads are not necessarily built to spec, the same statute, the subsection prior allows you to negotiate with the association, the acceptance and maintenance of those roads. So if you wanna talk something in there that very specifically says, we're not putting culverts, then we can do that. Uh, we're not putting ditches, I think we can do that, not put in tile drains, then we can put that in there. Um, you make it very clear that anything within the county's right of way, so what, eleven, twelve feet on each side of the road, may be damaged on our responsibility.
And the county held harmless?
Yes. It's, it's in our, if the board accepts the roads, it's in our right of way. It's no different than if somebody left a tree or a junk car in a ditch, if the county needs to go in and clean the ditch, I'm gonna tell them, take the dozer and show it our way. That's gonna include retaining walls, mailboxes, sprinklers. I don't think it's gonna come to that, but at the end of the day, that's where the buck stops.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes.
We, we talked about Hillcrest, and I'm glad you mentioned that because, um, anyway, Hillcrest is a little bit different topographically, and that's part of the problem, I think. I see, uh, a couple of the roads out there are relatively flat, I say relatively. I, I guess I would have a, to you, Jason, almost a, as much concern as if we tried to do some kind of a shallow morrow than not, I mean, a, you know, a ditch, because I'm afraid it probably would just sit there, there's, we'd have to obviously check some grades and stuff, but, uh, that's, that's, uh, one that we definitely are gonna have to look at as to if we address that issue, how we address it, you know, because it's just a totally different lay, and I'm not sure that maybe the way it is now in some areas isn't better than what we would make it if we allowed for some waterways, as long as the individuals know that if something does happen to happen there, it's gonna get damaged, and sorry, it might not look good for you, but that's just the way it is, so...
Thank you, Joe. Follow-up question, uh, just before it jumps on ahead, the utilities. Do we have fiber optic that would impede our ability to create?
Uh, you know that, I have not seen a, a map of any of the utilities that are running there.
And maybe some of the homeowners can speak to that, they probably know where the sign, Jack, Jack pays attention, like, he probably knows where the, pardon.
Fiber optics all run in between, is that correct, or is...
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking spectrum and charging and, yeah, they're...
They're in the middle of the lots, the lots here, it comes right in the middle.
Where do they come in, Jack, where do they come in?
It, it comes in on the west end.
Yeah.
Some of it comes to the west, some come on the east, but...
You know, I'm not sure how, I think it comes in from the south to get to the subdivision.
But we're not running down the right of way?
No.
The street?
No. It runs right down.
You know, then there are the, the cable boxes and the transformer pedals will, are just off the twenty-two foot right of way.
Okay, thank you.
So they're not, I don't think there's anything, except maybe I got some blocks out front, somebody's got a little fence out on the other southwest corner as far as having anything on the east, but...
As far as, if Jason had to do something, if we said, you know, if we would adopt it or accept the division, um, that's key to me that we, we're not getting into something where we're gonna disrupt a bunch of property owners and not be able to solve the problem we might need.
And it's just like all the other subdivisions, you go up and down Lake Moon Drive or wherever you go, I mean, there's some collateral damage because you can't see the edge of the road, and, you know, we're not looking to have the road manicured after a snow. You know, after a heavy snow, it'd be great if you could just do a single pass right down the center of the road.
So, I have a few questions. Um, it was mentioned that an engineering firm went through and, and worked with this when the subdivision was put in, what's the firm?
Um, TC Engineering actually, um, had a statement when this was done back in two thousand and one, that it met all county standards for, um, putting it in as far as, um, paving right of way, those types of things.
Well, I think, I think this board would put a, a good stock in what TC Engineering does, I mean, we do contract with them, um, so I think that they, they should know what the county specifications are for our roads. Um, I echo the concerns as far as, um, any of the property owners having landscaping, decorative stone, sprinkler heads, uh, that it's understood that should we accept these roads, any damage to those is, is not the county's responsibility, that it, it would be in the county's property, uh, the right of way. Um, so it might be who of the property owners to take proactive steps and, and relocate those items. Um, from a drainage standpoint, with TC Engineering, I would think that they would know the topography and soil type and, and understand that that's sand out there, and has there been any history of extensive... Until you pave it, until you pave it. Well, it's... Been into a few of those, those, so... It's asphalt, it's now.
And it is paved, yep, yep, it is.
Not, not all the frontages though.
Yeah, I think, I think every frontage coming into each lot...
It's all asphalt. No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the adjacent properties, it's landscaped, right, soil. We've run into another one where the neighbor to one side, and this probably doesn't apply because of the flatter part of you, but we had one where the property owner on one side of the road is damaged by the property owner on the other side because he changed the watershed by additional pavings. No, but I'm just, just saying to the point that it's, things do change. Well, my, my point would be is if we accept these, those right of ways, they're not going to be landscape, they're going to be sand, um, and should there be a need for, uh, additional drainage, uh, to be taken into consideration, that we're working through that process. I, I suppose my point is, is how many lot, how many lots are still vacant out there?
Eight. Twenty of twenty-eight have houses.
Twenty of twenty-eight, yeah.
On a tax basis over ten million dollars, but by fourth grade math, that's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars a year.
Now, not all of that comes to the county.
I understand. I'll have to, you know, ask Jack what his taxes are.
Um, and, and my, my point is, is you guys are paying taxes, uh, you are paying county taxes, uh, and you're not getting the full services provided with those county taxes. And I think that's a point that we need to be sensitive of. We are in a situation where we are going to be experiencing tremendous economic growth in our county, countywide, we have a housing crisis. I think that we need to be doing everything we can to facilitate housing. There's a housing crisis at the price point that is in your subdivision, uh, that also needs to be taken into consideration. A concern that I have is the life left on the road that's existing now. How, in your opinion, Jason, what's the usable life left on that asphalt?
Um, I guess the usable life...
Before it would need to be resurfaced.
Guess I wasn't prepared to answer that one. Um, yeah, I mean, the, the pavement's in good condition out there, I think there's been only one spot that's been repaired out there, uh, but most of it seems like it's in really good condition. Um, so considering the county as a whole, I think as far as like an overlay treatment, something like that, you probably would be looking in the five to ten year range, maybe?
Okay.
Somewhere in there?
I was gonna say, compared to most of our county roads, it's probably ninety-nine, we're probably in the upper ninety percent of the quality of the road.
So...
The roadway at least.
To, to that point, I want the property owners to understand, um, should we accept these roads, they're going to be lumped in with every other county road that we have in the county, over sixteen hundred miles of county road, they're all gonna be triaged as far as need of maintenance, need of, of service. Um, when it comes snow time, we'll do everything that we can to get them cleared, but it's going to be assessed on an as-need basis, just like every other county road, and I wanna make sure that the property owners are understanding that. I see a lot of heads nodding up and down yes, and I, I understand that that's, that's something that's probably often said up until the point that they're accepted, and then we start getting phone calls, why is my road not being taken care of? Because in a, every, every stretch of, of road, county road, is the most important road to the property owner that lives on that particular section of road, so I'm just putting it out there for the record that, um, they will be triaged and, and accepted. Should they be accepted, they'll be triaged accordingly, uh, and if the county doesn't have the funds to, to maintain, or to resurface them at a particular point in time that property owners feel that they need to be resurfaced, you gotta understand that we're working with a lot of mileage, we're gonna do everything we can to get to them as, as we can, so that's just points that I wanna make sure are firmly understood by the property owners.
I will say, excuse me, um, in our many conversations, that the homeowners association has always been open to, um, working with us to come to a, an agreement that works for both parties. Um, you know, they, they have said, if we need to move sprinkler heads, we'll do that. If we need to do that, this, we will, you know, have a conversation with you about it. Um, I've been very honest with you guys in saying that I've lived on the same county road for forty years, and my road doesn't get plowed frequently when we have a snow, and that's not an expectation that I think you should have going into this. Um, yeah, I feel like, for me, I would feel comfortable sitting down with the homeowners association if Tyler feels that that is necessary to move this along, sit down with the homeowners association and the county road superintendent and Tyler, and, um, work out some of the details, so we have, everybody is on the same page and well aware of the expectations going into this. And, and as Chris said, for the record, you understand that when you dedicate your roads to the county, you give up a lot of your personal control on when maintenance does happen. It's been my impression that you guys have been great stewards of your road, that you've done crack sealing and that kind of maintenance, but for the county, if the money's not there, those things can't happen. And I feel like these are important issues to address before, you know, um, we go into an agreement. So Tyler, is that, is there room for that?
Well, it depends whether or not the board considers the roads to be built to spec, because if we're gonna say they're built to spec, and they don't need ditches because the topography and the soil type being sandy drains itself, and there's already the understanding from the homeowners that what's in the right of way may be destroyed, um, it's county government, we don't move that fast, I'm sure we should phone call...
Much charge, sure, yeah.
If the board is not intending to do anything about the drainage, but let it be, um, and the homeowners understand the right of way situation, I don't think we need to negotiate it, I, I think they're probably in spec, you have to take them.
We have a document from a professionally licensed engineer saying that they're built to spec.
Yes. Okay.
An engineer that we utilize.
Yes.
Frequently.
All the time.
We've got the adequate right of way.
Yep, and we do have the adequate right of way.
Mr. Chairman? Do you have a motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request by Fairway Estates Homeowners Association, Inc., to accept dedication and adoption of Fairway Estates Road, Fairway Avenue, Fairway Drive, and Clubhouse Drive as shown on Campbell Estates' first subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Willard. Any further discussion on this? Tyler, clarify, like, I heard earlier that because of the, uh, grade or the pitch on the road and something else, that it did not meet specs, and now we're saying it does meet specs?
Well, it can, as long as your, um, county road superintendent is okay with that, that's what the regulation states.
Okay.
That he has the authority to say that...
Well, I just take, I just hate to set a precedent that somebody else that wasn't such great steward of their section of road and their, uh, development came before us and said, well, you waived these specs for...
Well, we can go back to the, um, statement from TC Engineering that says that it meets all the standards back in two thousand and one.
So that's our back stuff?
Um, that would be what I would consider something to go back on. Now, if the next subdivision comes in and it was built in two thousand and twelve, they're gonna have to adhere to the ones that are in here, which are gonna be a little bit better than two thousand and one.
Thank you, thank you. I clarified this.
Um, and then also, it, it does still give him the discretion to say, okay, it does... And then also, it, it does still give him the discretion to say, okay, it does meet all the specs except for this, I'm gonna go ahead with it, or it does meet all the specs except for this, and I'm gonna say no.
You agree with that, Tyler? From a legal standpoint? Okay, thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Jason, do you feel like we've given you a fair opportunity to weigh in?
Uh, yes, I think the, like I said, my major concern was the drainage issues, but I think as long as everybody has the understanding of we're accepting them the way they are and, you know, there is no plan currently to, to do anything with those. So just wanna make that clear to everybody.
But we're making it clear to the landowners that you have that latitude to do so.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that each subdivision, if there are other subdivisions that wanna come forward whose roads aren't adopted, they will have their own evaluation and we will be back in here. I don't think this necessarily sets a precedence, except that as stewards of the county, that we are willing to support our taxpayers in the manner that they probably expected when they built in our community.
I would, I would push back on that to a certain degree. It does set a precedent that we'll consider on a case-by-case basis.
Correct.
And I guess, yeah, and just to, to add on to that a little bit in setting a precedent, I think it's important to note that right now, given the conditions that are out there and my concerns with the drainage, there appears to be no issues ongoing right now with, with anything drainage related. So that would be, you know, it'd be a whole different conversation, I think, if we were seeing signs that we were having drainage issues out there relating to the roads or affecting the properties adjacent to it as well.
We can differentiate moving forward, as Judy points out and Tyler points out.
Yep.
The not two thousand and one spec to two thousand and twelve, is that correct?
Yeah.
Any further conversation? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Willard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Our time is up.
Thank you for being there, Sheriff. When we have these kind of votes, I always assess how many people are out there on the other side and how long it takes me to get to the door, so I appreciate you showing up.
Thank you for keeping an eye on Jack.
I thought you was Sheriff.
See ya, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, I told Lois I would call her, I do think pumpkin patches will be this whole time.
Well.
Yeah, you gotta do this without me.
I'm gonna ask the question.
I will, tough to send somebody else in.
Where have you been? We were ready for you at nine-thirty.
No.
Moving, do we need to call Lois then?
Well, can we just skip down now and come back? Cause the other-
Moving on to our ten-twenty agenda item, we're gonna go out of order here on the agenda. Discuss and consider special designated liquor permits submitted by Powell's Brewing Company for the Pumpkin Patch Festival at the Homestead Pumpkin Patch on October seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I think that's a wonderful idea to approve.
Thank you.
Well, we've heard weigh-in by the county sheriff.
Well, you got one supporter.
Um, the original-
I'm gonna guess then, Sheriff, you didn't experience any difficulty with this organization and event last year?
How many are in this?
How many dates? Four dates.
Can we do them separate?
Yes, Fridays.
We can do them all as one.
You ready, Sheriff?
I am. We do have, just for the record, we have the check for the fees for all applications.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve special designated liquor permits submitted by Powell's Brewing Company for the Pumpkin Patch Festival at Homestead Pumpkin Patch on October four, uh, excuse me, October seven, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-eight of two thousand twenty-two.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Willard?
Aye.
Brunz?
I do apologize for the wait. Unfortunately, not unfortunately, there's, there's items that sometimes arise that need additional consideration. We had a few of those today.
I live just half a mile south of the Pumpkin Patch, so I will probably be over. They do a really good job over there.
Do you grow any pumpkins this year?
I didn't. Gwen was with me earlier, but she had to leave for work, so I'm sure they're getting everything ready. We do have pumpkin-
I didn't plant any pumpkins, and I have a really big one in my yard, so maybe a bird brought it over from them.
Lois emailed these two today?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
This is my first one, so.
That was-
Good thing the sheriff was here and helped you out.
Yes.
Nice.
Sure he drilled you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Lois is on her way.
I think so.
Alrighty. Moving on to our next agenda item, discuss and consider the purchase of a plotter, scanner for the Register of Deeds office. How are you, Lois?
I'm fine.
You could stake your name and sign in for the record.
My name is Lois, you want the Lois A Block?
Perfect.
Do you, can you help me?
Looking to buy a piece of equipment for the office, huh?
Well, I, we have one in the back room, but they've told me it probably is like eight years old, and I can't get copies or parts for, I think he said the scanner, and it's all out of warranty. And so I, Dave and Curtis have been helping me on it, and they're the ones that recommended this cannon. The city has one, has a cannon over there too, so, and if I turn in my bill and get it before the thirtieth, I save a little bit of money, as I think you guys can see, so.
Okay. Tell me what a plotter does.
It's a, it's a big copier.
Makes a great big-
Great big, thirty-six by, well, thirty-six by however long I need it to be. And when I originally, and it's coming out of my P and M money, my preservation and maintenance fund that I get, so it's not out of the-
You do have this budgeted? You do have this budgeted?
Yeah. Well, I don't, the P and M money, I don't have to turn in all the time to you guys, so I have, I looked at the last statement and I have quite a bit of money in it, so I could probably buy two or three of them.
Well, Lois, did Dave help you, did, uh, price comparisons or did we do that?
Yeah, Dave's the one, Dave and Curtis were, they're the ones that were looking into it and got this, and I'm not sure what all, if they-
Got several bids or-
Yeah, I'm not sure if they got bids or not, so.
So what's the dollar?
Kind of on the borderline.
It's nine thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars if we purchase it before the end of September, correct?
That's right.
Dollar amount for three informal bids.
So I'm, I'm under the ten thousand dollar thing, so, but, so, and the one in the back isn't working anymore, and so. I use it mainly, well, I've made copies for Becky and I made-
The Becky kind, who Lois made.
Copies for Julie and out at the Roads Department. Dave, I think if I understood him right, said that the printer might still work, and so we would maybe see if, um, they wanted it out at the Roads Department because they can log into our system and print out stuff without having to come and get them after we've printed them.
Don't you still have a large format printer out there?
A what?
Large format printer.
Yeah, in, in the back room.
No, the Roads.
He's talking past you, Jason.
Yeah, I think we have, I think we have a lot of my seventeen capability, or else I think about-
Uh, you must've got rid of it, okay.
I don't think I've used it.
No, I was talking to Jason, thank you, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We just wanna make sure, I think it's ten thousand, our number, the way I put it.
Yeah, so.
I just wanna make sure we were compliant. And hopefully Dave did some work and got some-
Dave and, Dave and Curtis have, when, when we were having trouble making some copies on it, they came over and was working with it, and they worked with this Malik, I think his name was, with Saline, Selena, Salina, that's where we got our other one, and that's where this bid is from. And they worked with him several times, a couple of, three different days, and they just remembered and worked it.
Salina Blue, that's who we got ours from.
Where?
Salina Blue.
Yeah.
That's who we got ours from. There it is.
Salina Blue. Well, so it falls underneath at the threshold for three informal bids. What I hear you say is this is a piece of equipment that you're needing. You've worked with IT to go through this process, you have it budgeted. Colleagues in mind, do you have any other questions for Lois?
As a recent customer in Lois's office, I know the value of having those big maps to look at. It certainly helps having all that detail very large. So with that said, are you ready for a-
I am.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, you approve, the purchase of a plotter scanner for the Register of Deeds office in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Nine thousand six hundred and ninety-five.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion by Willard, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this?
For the record, I wanna make sure that we check with the council and assure them that we are indeed complying with the bid process. I'd like to do that, we'll work with them next day. We'll just have Todd make, we just want Todd to run. Run it by Todd, he's had to step out for a moment.
Okay.
No big deal.
All right.
Just making sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lois.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Willard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye. Thank you, Lois. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, discuss and consider the appointment of the Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee. All right, if my memory serves, what's out?
I am the sheriff's department, I think. Doesn't it?
I think you have power to shoot it.
My memory serves correct, this is two county board members that I will be appointing. Are there any volunteers?
Mr. Chairman, I would volunteer to work on this committee for the management of the Black-tailed Prairie Rodents.
Okay.
As would I. So am I.
Okay. I, is there anybody else interested?
No, I'll draw my offer if somebody else wants it.
Okay.
Darn it, I was really-
Joe, you can-
All right, I'm going to appoint Commissioner Woodruff and Commissioner Weems as the two county board representatives to the Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Committee. I believe that satisfies that. Next-
There used to be two down on Deerwood that took care of them, sorry.
Moving on, discuss and consider approval and publication of the annual notice of the management plan. And I believe, there's a lot of resolutions in front of us. What's the resolution number on this, Becky?
Twenty-one.
So this is per state statute, we have to give appropriate notice in the one of our newspapers of general circulation in the county on an annual basis, but this plan is, this satisfies that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-one for the approval and publication of the annual notice of the management plan for the Black-tailed Prairie Dog. Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Woodruff. Once this is published, I believe, the committee is standing and we can start entertaining circumstances as they arise, so. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Willard?
Aye.
Brunz?
He lets you over here. This is the page we sent.
Good catch, Commissioner Woodruff.
I don't even need to tell you where the kids these days.
Along the trend of the other commissioners, we'll catch that signature on the way back.
We all need a little guidance once in a while.
Some of us more than others. That's what the end of the train is for, everybody in line.
Then I almost signed on Joe's line.
All right, resolution's passed, adopted. Moving on to our next agenda item, receive the report of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent concerning Somerset Road in part of the east half of southwest quarter of Section twenty-six, Township ten north, Range thirty-one west, concerning the possible vacation of Park Somerset Road.
Hi again, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. So, trust you all have a copy. So the board did direct me to do a study on the right of way listed. Do I need to, I guess I probably don't even read the legal, do I? Everybody knows the right of way we're talking about. So down, after completing that, my findings are in the letter as follows, so the above right of way, since it has been in the possession of Lincoln County since nineteen sixty-nine, we have not used that- we have not used that area right-of-way up until now and not using it currently and really don't see any value in it going forward. So, it's a pretty steep hill right there and drops off into a steep ravine, pretty unusable area. So, I would recommend to vacate this portion of right-of-way.
So, this is the one where Mr. Johnson, the portion of the side is being hunted by erosion into its pasture?
No, this is, this is the Hazen Howard family out on South Somerset Road. They've been in before us and it's that, just that small triangular piece that...
I had a more, uh... The state vacated this part of, that little triangular piece of right-of-way to the county.
Yep.
I don't think that we, at that time, understood it.
Yep.
And the property owners were requesting that portion.
Do we need to approve this report?
Yes, we do need to approve.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we are, we approve the report of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent concerning Somerset Road in part of this east half of southwest quarter of section twenty-six, township ten, range thirteen west, concerning the possible vacation of part of Somerset Road.
For it to be filed, and for it to be filed.
And for it to be filed.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wuller. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Get this signed. That's...
Oh, this one?
Now you got to put on the end, the end of your hearing.
That's, that's, yeah.
Did they sign that in the right place?
Oh, yeah, they did.
In it.
I'm watching now.
Get them out of there.
Okay, next item on this topic is discuss and consider setting a date for public hearing concerning vacation of a portion of Somerset Road in part of the east half of southwest corner of section twenty-six, township ten north, range thirty-one west. Becky, do you have any proposed dates?
Tyler put it in there, it's October, it's in there, October fifth, nine thirty or something like that.
Tenth day of October, nine thirty a.m.
What day?
Tenth day of October.
Oh, okay.
Nine thirty, resolution number twenty-two-two-two.
There it is, okay.
Register the motion.
I am, please.
Okay, I would make a motion that we set a public hearing concerning vacation of a portion of Somerset Road in part of the east half of the southeast quarter of section twenty-six, township ten north, range thirty-one west of the six p.m. And it is resolution twenty-two-two-two-two.
Motion by Hughley.
Second.
Second by Wuller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
All right, date is noted. Don't believe we have a need for a closed session today. Next item on our agenda is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. I will leave this open while we finish signing the claims, at which point we will then go into a work session to finalize the recommended twenty-two, twenty-three Lincoln County budget.
Jason, I feel like we really got a lot of use out of you today here. You were up and down more than I've ever seen anybody.
If you have need for comment.
This goes back over there.
You.
Salt shit, ready for occupation of salt?
It is, it is, yes.
Good.
And tomorrow, Calgérie's environment.
What time will they start?
I think around ten.
I'm not sure I'll be, I might be tied up.
I might be able to sneak over.
Go ahead, go ahead, look, yeah. I may not be able to make it. And then it's supposed to rain in the mountains, so... We'll see what... Sounds good, sir. Won't know if it works if it rains.
Thank you. I'll plan on being up there just to watch.
You know, uh...
Thanks, Jason, for your help.
They got four and a half inches out of the view over on, um...
Thank you.
The old Verison Ranch. And up on the hill, just on the hill, mile and a half out of town, four and a half inches.
Whoa.
When? The old Verison Ranch and a mile and a half north, you know, up on the hill, right up on the hill. And daughter lives out there in her gagehead, four and a half inches that night. We got a half inch out south.
Uh, did they get held real bad?
She didn't say. I think they were so happy to see the water in there, I don't think it would've mattered, probably.
We had a visitor yesterday that said Tryon lost all of the leaves off of their trees to heavy hell that night and that they sent a motor grader out on Ringo Road to clear the drifts of hell off of them.
That'd be darned. That seems funny.
Wow, that's a lot of...
It's a lot of hell.
That's a hell of a lot of hell, isn't it?
But it does melt and turns to moisture.
Oh, I see they cleared it off the road because they didn't need the moisture on the road.
That's right.
Have you noticed just, just a half-inch rain that we got, things started green up a little bit, it's cool. Couldn't believe it, just been a day or two.
Yeah. I think this pen is starting to run out of...
Gas? Tammy's got some.
I may, I may need a blood transfusion here. I can see it's starting to rain. I didn't know whether... You handled that or who?
Well, she said she would take, volunteer to take that over, but she put it back over. Depleted most of my inventory.
I have, I don't know why, I have two empty ones in here.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Did you have her get you some cartridges?
No, I'll have to do that because then she comes in.
I think I'm all but out of cartridges.
We've got the full house there, most of them already, didn't we? I think they were here to see you.
They did that fish wash.
Remember how many times I asked if there was a list in all the subdivisions?
You just, yeah, well, something older.
In, oh, my God, my head, my, my chief head, please.
Maybe they're in the town or something, been a tough meeting, but... Ah, we can hear from your little girl.
She's doing great.
Mine?
Yes.
All mine?
All for you. You can thank Kami for all the research and...
Oh, great.
I wonder how many have gone in since then. Do you think there's many? Because Campbell's subdivision's not on that list, but Maloney Highlands is.
Would Rossmar have any others?
Uh, Prairie View one and two and Prairie View Acres are both on there, or all three are on there. But I don't, I don't know that he has any more.
Which one is thirty acres? Is that the one by the prairie market?
That's the, the very farthest one that's in the sage brush. That's the one that we don't, the county does not have responsibility.
North of the canal.
Yes. The very far northwest portion of that one and, and you can...
So, that's probably the most recent one, I would think.
Probably, I'm thinking.
And that's when Willis probably was on the board.
Yeah, yeah. It's weird that that one's on the list, but Campbell's isn't. And I think Campbell's was done before Prairie View Acres' second subdivision.
Who did Tyler go?
Dennis.
Oh, I've been trying to meet with him on this, uh... He'll over at the Crafty House, it's doing it. Yeah, I, you know, but there's, it's like six months. Sorry about that, gosh.
For the best of my knowledge, it should all be there, but they're, they didn't get anything.
Thank you, yeah.
Kami, any mileage claim for the planning and zoning, please?
Yeah, that should be in today's.
Oh, okay.
Yep, for you guys.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you check, make sure there's nothing in there for Wallace, for Chris and Michaela?
I made my husband, uh...
Was he?
Take his vehicle and my son took his semi, so Tommy was the big, the big contributor to our trip.
Is that the chemicals in the military?
Yes.
Um, again, I just have to think of it. No, but I just thought years has probably done chopping sides of that road a little bit.
Good. We went down, um, trying to think what day it was. There were some places where they've done a little pulling up on the shoulders, but it held up nice. And then we went by, they're still hauling a lot of, uh... I don't know what's going on on N Corp out there, lots of comings and goings with forestry vehicles, U.S. Forestry.
Maybe the pink trees get that high.
Yeah, that they're trees. But yeah, the road, the road held up really well. We got to watch them harvesting some potatoes too. And now I have a big bag of potatoes at my house. From, one of our neighbors is hauling potatoes for the potato farm. And so, we went, on our way home from Wallace, we went over and watched their machines work. Not something I had ever seen before, very interesting.
Not long, it's because they moved, so it wouldn't be down.
What's that?
Wouldn't be long, it's because they moved.
No.
Aaron used to, well, he still does, this bud come in there, you know, and it's... But they...
They were actually down on, is that highway, what's the highway that runs south over into Wallace?
Twenty-three.
Is that twenty-three? That's where they were working, was on highway twenty-three.
Pretty big storage facility over there, isn't it?
Yes.
They harvest onions quite similarly.
Really? Yeah, it was interesting to hear all of the different ways they sort them and divide them and what they're used for.
I mean, seriously.
Almost, really, really.
Is that it for claims?
This might not be the same for them, but I know, but maybe it's not. Might as well be different. Ours just went out this year too, I think.
Becky, did you have anything before going into the work session?
No.
Tammy, did you have anything before going into the session?
No.
Next item on the agenda is a work session to finalize the recommended twenty-two, twenty-three Lincoln County budget.
Since we moved up the budget here, Susan and I had to help get into the Telegraph for publication on Friday. It has to be published on Tuesday.
Oh, I'm gonna make some changes there.
Well, we're hoping if we make changes today, we can still get it out there. These were the changes I gave Susan. You also had a request from Rebecca Harling, I think Chris knows about it, I do not know, the rest of you do, a change in Tyler's salary around.
So, Tyler's salary, because he cannot, currently, he gets part of his salary paid through funds that come from child support.
Correct.
He is...
The bulk of it.
Yeah, the bulk of it, actually. He's no longer able to do child support because his better half is taking the judgeship in district court. Therefore, he can't be on any of those cases, so they're rearranging some staff duties. He'll be taking over all civil for the county, which includes the planning commission and everything. So, Steve will be transitioning into the child support capacity, so... But that, in turn, requires some changing of the dollars, where the dollars are coming from to pay his salary. So, that's what she is forwarding on, that was information.
Who's going into child support?
Steve.
For me?
Steve. Steve.
Okay, so that forced Susan and I basically to do what we could to make those changes prior to Friday. County treasurer, I did drop that one down. I'm gonna go through this colored one first. Have made around that? There we go. Do you have a lot of things?
Yep.
Do I?
Yep.
Well, let me get one off the. Thank you.
So just the two sheets?
Well, there's.
Three.
There's three sheets.
Letter from Becky, colored sheet.
Got it.
There's one of these and then these will be your other ones.
Oh, okay, so we need those two, Joe.
Here's hopefully our final.
I was looking in there to see the adjustment on the other end coming off. I don't just like it going on, on the county attorneys.
I'll get to that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the treasurer, I did change that line item. I dropped it to twenty thousand on the furniture. I don't know what discussion was had with Sherry, but I did drop that line item to at least that. Advertising insurance and bonds, Larry Stoudes brought in a, um, the work comp audit and the insurance liability audit. So it was about, I don't know what's going on in my head. Anyway, whatever.
Thirty thousand on the work comp?
Yeah. So I went ahead and added that to those line items, cause I had not anticipated those. I had for the insurance on those two lines, what Tanner had given me for, what we owe for this fiscal year. So I added those at that audit.
Did Tanner give you something other than the original three thirty, four, four fifty line insurance liability? Okay, so we had a thousand bucks there.
I had dropped the insurance. I mean, I had, when Tanner gave, Tanner gave me the figure, so that's what I plugged into the budget, so I'm just adding on. This one was not very much, so we're, um, there's only like six hundred and some dollars on the work comp. Okay, so I, we just got that bill on the fourteenth. Okay, the thing for, here's your letter from Rebecca explaining why she was asking what she's asking. But here's the thing about child support, Joe, remember, we cannot, we cannot really decrease her child support budget. We can supplement, but we can't supplant.
I understand.
So that's why she, we can't really decrease that budget on the other side. We had to add the seventy-eight thousand on to that.
No, but we can, but we can decrease.
Not that Steve was making.
Stevens.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna put it on Tyler's, we sure as hell better take it off of Stevens' end.
Exactly.
Steven was already partially on there.
Well, so was Tyler. Also, she cut a person from her office and didn't say anything, and we didn't see any reduction from the cut person.
I'm just telling you about the child support one. I don't, I don't know about the, she was turning back in about seventy thousand a year on the child support side anyway. Cause we can't really decrease that budget.
I don't want to decrease the budget at all. Not even asking that. All I'm saying is, I'd like to find out where she took the savings from the person that she took out of that end down in the office, which was child support. Where did that go? What, there's some other salaries? That's okay, let me know. And how do we add seventy-eight if we don't take a like amount off the other person's salary? Nothing to do with child support.
Yeah, why can't there just be a flip?
Tyler was on seventy-five percent child support. His, 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 no, Sarah's probably watched. Tyler was already coming out, seventy-five percent out of child support enforcement.
That's okay, put seventy-five percent onto Stevens.
And then reduce, reduce his out of her regular.
Exactly, salary.
Budget for salary.
Okay, you'll have to talk to Rebecca.
Could we do that? I'd be glad to ask her to come down.
Tell me why we, and I've seen this in all sorts of publications, with tax rate, if prior tax request was at current valuation, is that kind of a touching feeling?
No, that's comparing apples to apples.
It's two years ago, three years ago, Chris, that one.
That's when it came in?
Is that the one? Because one of them just came in last year, the year before, that changed the wording on it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if that's it or not.
Okay, she's on her way. She's here. She's on her way.
That was quick.
Only a short distance away.
You know what?
Oh, yeah? Yes.
Okay, I, I'd asked if you'd come down. I see where Tyler is, um, and I understand why going, um, not gonna be able to handle child support anymore because of upstairs. Do you wanna wait for Ken or not? Just go, wait, okay.
He'll be here in two seconds.
Okay, can I go back to my initial question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, if prior tax request was at current valuation, why is that line item on there? Is that to make everybody kinda feel pretty good about themselves?
Are you talking about the stuff at the bottom?
Yep, about your last one.
Yep, it's a basically legislature thought we need to have it using the prior year valuation.
So it negates a lot of political subdivisions from raising the valuations, but reducing their tax rate and saying, oh, look, we reduced your tax rate. But in all essence, they're still bringing in more tax revenue for the county. They're not necessarily shrinking.
Yeah, so what we have actually done since the line of that is minus four percent, we have actually accomplished that.
Correct, we have.
Ken's back, so we'll go over to the other question.
Rebecca, I understand why Tyler can no longer be up in the courts, or at least a court, okay? But I don't understand why there's not a couple of savings. I think maybe a year ago or close to a year ago, you let, let a person go in your office. It should have been some savings, I think. Was down in the front end. Gallett would did all the work by hand and was a real good computer.
You mean in child support?
Yes, in child support, right. I don't know where those funds went. I didn't see it reflected anywhere where that savings went in that person. But I did have, you can answer that also, but why would we not, why wouldn't this be a little bit of a wash? I think seventy-five percent of Tyler's went to child support. I don't know how much of Stevens went to the civil end or where, where his was billed at. Why can't we take, if, if he's going into child support, why can't this kind of wash, this seventy-eight thousand dollars that we're asking to add for Tyler? Where was Stevens' money coming from?
Okay, uh, let me try and answer.
Because we're not hiring new, different, new, different people.
No, I understand that. Child support's budget cannot be reduced.
We can reduce it, you don't want to, we don't either. Go ahead. I agree, it's a good.
So the, the question is, is if we're changing personnel, why can't we use the same percentage as far as salary for Steven as what was being used for Tyler? So it seemed like we're, we're raising, we're going from your deputy's salary from three hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars to four hundred and forty-eight dollars, two hundred and, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, excuse me.
Here's, here's what's gonna happen. Under federal and state law, you cannot reduce your child support budget. So all of the money will come back to you, but can't right now. It has to come back at the end. So Steve will do probably about ninety percent child support and ten percent of kind of criminal budget. We will be paying salaries out of incentive. We will give you back all of Tyler's seventy-five percent at the end of the year. We will probably give you close to a hundred thousand dollars back. But federal and state government won't let us reduce the budget. They won't. Can't supplant. So, so I, I, I guess that's that. And then we have a court time deputy that is, is, um, being paid, and we also have to pay Tyler for a hundred percent now of his work out of the criminal budget. None of it can come out of the child support budget.
But it can come out of civil.
Criminal and civil are all the same.
I didn't know it, I didn't know that. I don't know, because you have a civil division, Tyler's in the civil division, and you have a criminal division. I mean, that's the way you've had in the past.
Well, there's never been two separate budgets ever. It's all criminal or child.
So, okay, I didn't realize that. So Joe Wright was just assigned to the civil process area, but he was.
Right, but it was in the criminal division. We only have two. We only have two budgets, criminal and child.
So right now, a percentage of child support is being utilized to pay Tyler's salary, correct?
Correct.
So why can't we use that same percentage of budget out of child support to then in turn pay Stevens?
Yeah, we're gonna pay ninety percent.
But why doesn't that show on this thing right here? Why don't you send us something that says Stevens will be reduced by seventy-eight thousand? It'll come out of child support and we'll pay his salary. Why don't you send us two letters? That's what, I mean, you got confused, am I not explaining it well?
Do you know what Stevens at right now? Is he like fifty-fifty? I, I don't know without asking. I, I, I don't, I think he gets paid twenty-five percent out of criminal right now. Or, or less. And seventy-five percent out of child support.
Okay, all right, all right. That answers my question. So, um, is there another attorney that's going to be assigned to get seventy-eight thousand out of child support?
Is there another?
In other words, can we draw some more child support money to offset the seventy-eight thousand that you're asking come out of the county budget? That's my question.
No, we're going down to one attorney. And then I'm gonna oversee that one attorney, so Tyler is nowhere involved. But I don't believe, and this has never happened before, so you gotta bear with me, I don't believe that we can take any of my salary as an elected official and pay for child, pay through child support.
Can you take one of your deputy's salaries?
Well, I, I might be able to, but I'm gonna be the one that has to oversee everything.
I understand, but didn't you oversee Tyler?
Well, yes, but.
And so if you take another attorney, and all I'm saying is, I, I'm, I have a little bit of heartburn about paying it for seventy-eight thousand if we're not getting an additional employee. I would rather see us allocate that money coming out of child support and say, okay, we're gonna pay Smith seventy-eight thousand. Seventy-five percent of his salary will come out of child support for the person that we're losing. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and I, and I get that. We literally are gonna have one person doing all of the child support. So, um, I think that child support can be done by one attorney. And then I oversee them. That's the problem. And none of my own making. Because Cindy got the job. And the defense bar has made it perfectly clear, they're gonna flood the system with motions. So this was the best option I had, or the only option I had. Tyler can have nothing to do with it. We are busy enough in the civil realm for everything that isn't child support, that Tyler's full-time doing that.
You mean in the criminal realm?
Semantics.
Civil.
But I, I didn't name the budgets, Joe. I just, I.
Well, when you're talking about civil realm, now I'm getting confused. Cause I thought we had child support and criminals, what you just told me.
She's got criminal civil in the same bucket.
In the same bucket.
Because, because that's what I'm handed and have been handed since two thousand and eight. That's how the budget's always been. So Tyler, who is in the criminal budget, is full-time doing everything you need. Plus, you know, FOP, all of that. So he's doing that. Our criminal budget for all the criminal attorneys, we are full-time. I, I, I gave you a letter that showed how busy we are and how busy we are compared to every other county that's in our way. So we've got plenty of business here in the budget I have been handed forever, which is criminal. And then Steve's gonna do child support. And we don't need anybody else to do child support. One person can do it with my oversight. And wait till sustainable beef comes in with another county. I'm not kidding. I mean, I worked in less. I'm telling you, you're gonna need it with all the new business. But you will get a, a huge amount of money back from child support. It's how it's always been. We're giving you almost a hundred grand back, but we can't do it any other way, cause that's what the government says.
So it's going up by about seventy-five.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Here in the budget, but that comes back.
At the end, yeah. Yeah, because the language is you can't supplant, you can just augment. And so, um, we have tried, you know, to get all that money back to you. The unfortunate part is it can't be upfront, it's gonna be in the back.
And does that come into the general fund or into your budget?
No, no, it goes into the general fund at the end of the year. It helps our beginning cash balance. Yeah, I mean, I think I gave back way over a hundred last year. That goes back into the general fund.
Here's what I'm, here's what I'm, Chris, go ahead, please.
I'm just, I, I'm confused. I'm not saying that I'm, I'm not in favor of doing this. I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm clear on my thought process. We're not adding additional staff.
Correct.
But we're increasing the budget, the overall budget, by seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
I'm not, if we're, literally, we're flip-flopping attorneys in duties. I'm not understanding why they can't be paid out the same way as what was before the seventy-eight thousand dollars. I've, that, I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Cause Steven was already seventy-five percent in the child support enforcement, child support enforcement budget. The salary was already pretty much coming out.
So what I was asking is, can't we, so what I was asking Rebecca, can't we technically just name somebody else to be in that budget to take off the county's end and?
We have to do for the state and federal, a literally itemized timeline of how much time is spent by the child support attorney. If we can't show that, we can't ask for that money. So we are taking a guy who was paid twenty-five percent child support. And they, now I have to pay within the criminal, even though he's civil, his entire salary out of that. That's where the seventy-eight is coming from. Because that, I can't pay him from anything else.
And this fund over here for child support's gonna stay in that bucket?
That has to stay in that bucket, because otherwise we can't get reimbursement. Sixty-six percent of our costs are reimbursed. Okay, so we can't, that all comes back to you. Also, we get incentive funds above and beyond that, which we are using to pay salaries for this month, which also comes back to you. All of that comes back to you, but can't until the.
So the only thing that we're gaining is then twenty-five percent of Tyler's salary, I mean, of Steven's salary, you're saying?
Correct.
And how much was that?
I don't know right off the top of my head.
But I mean, did it reflect in your seventy-eight thousand? That's a fair question.
It reflected in that so that I could pay Tyler a hundred percent out of my budget.
Okay, so Tyler may be getting a hundred thousand, but twenty-five, I don't know.
Okay, and keep in mind, you called me three minutes ago. I don't have the files in front of me. So I, um, I'm, I'm just telling you, we tried to calculate so that we had a full amount for Tyler. You told us we could have, um, uh, an increase in salaries of eight percent, give or take. I, I don't, I can't remember what it was.
Eight point four or something like that.
Right, so we tried to get all of that in there so that Tyler could be paid a hundred percent. We also have to pay Steve about ten percent out of that budget. Ninety percent will be child support.
Get a base, get a baseline value in that budget that you cannot reduce.
Correct.
Cause you're paying a cheaper attorney.
Correct.
Reimbursement creates a change.
Your reimbursement ratios change.
Yeah.
So that hurts you.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Hurts our budget, because we have to reappropriate accordingly. I don't know what that number is, but I think I see that the lummy has been created this.
Through no fault of my own.
Right, I mean, if you're taking a person that, I know they don't make this big, 100,000, and you're gonna take another person that makes 50, you still have to put 100, you have to park 100 over there. Can't, you can't take out.
Correct.
And that money comes.
We're not gonna realize a 180 reversible dollars.
Correct.
Because that impedes that ability to do so.
Correct.
Am I saying it right?
Correct.
I think I get it, I.
I'm wrapping my arms around it now.
And then you said that 75 comes back to us, or 78?
66 comes back in reimbursement. And then, and we file quarterly reports.
For the people in child support.
Correct, yeah, just child support, correct.
66%.
So of Stevens' salary, okay, 66% is reimbursed, right?
Correct.
Yep.
And then we also get incentive funds above and beyond that, given the number of cases we do. The incentive funds can only be spent on new, on a very kind of minute number of things. But one of the things it can be spent on is salaries. But it has to be spent on salaries only once we hit a dollar amount the Fed say we can, can hit. So usually in September, we pay salaries, which was in the last couple of years around 30 of 40,000. That comes back to you in the end. Also, 66% comes back in the end.
There again, it's something that's very complicated. We had to actually switch the payroll for this month already to benefit that part of it, so we've had to work through some of this already.
But we have, not, not what I was looking for.
No.
At all. And we were perfectly hopeful that the, that Tyler could do child support on Judge Piccolo's side. And Steve could do child support on Cindy's side, and all would be well.
Oh, they are.
No, 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 no. We got, we got a ethics opinion from the bar that was waffly. And then the defense bar just lost their minds, and so now, now we are where we are.
Thank you.
That's it?
That was my question.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, she does, where's money that's turned back in at the end of every budget cycle, just because?
No, I understand that, but when there was two attorneys there, that money was turned back. All I'm trying to do is just maximize it in the form of a salary and the turn back. And that's all I'm trying to do.
So we get more.
Because if we only get 66% of Stevens', you know, when you get 25% of Stevens' and 75 of the other, but that's okay. I understand now what they're doing. That's fine, they can do it, but it's too bad.
I don't know that there's anybody else willing to do it, wanting to do it.
So and then the other one was the generator. I just took what Brandon had got for electrical and added it to that line item. It didn't increase that budget because we had in there, and it was outside, it was outside the lid anyway. So I just added that to the, for the electrical for the generator.
What did we have in the budget for that?
Uh, 135, I think, added about 48,000. I think that's what Brandon had for the potential electrical that he had from his first quote.
And that was coming out of the ARPA funds, right? We were paying for the generator.
Um, that's still in the building fund. Yeah, we did. I mean, this, this is outside the lid. It's not raised, I mean, it's. I would encourage you to use the ARPA funds for something else.
Same thing with 300 and some thousand, we were gonna buy, we wrote a document that we could press not, because we had to. Shouldn't have done that, that was from the, but we did.
Yeah, but we cut ourselves a short. All right.
Here are new sheets for your stuff, for your Excel budgets, if you want them. We will get everything in the actual BIF system, which will be our, our official one to go with the budget stuff for next week.
So the budget is airing on next Thursday?
At 11 o'clock.
Next Monday.
Monday. So now, like I said, when we moved everything up, Susan called me, said we have to have it to the paper today, so. That's why I did the changes.
You got an extra?
Yeah, there's extra down there. The last piece was the budget message. I changed it for some things that would apply to this year, so you can read through it. It'll be part of the budget package. If there's changes you want to make, just let me know.
All right, so these Excel, what's the changes on here?
Yeah, these were these changes.
Oh, okay. It was the.
Yeah, those reflect those, yeah.
Well, I tell you what. High inflationary year. And we're looking at reducing our property tax request by 1.21%. That's not bad.
Yep, not bad.
And our tax rate by 4.21%. Not as high as what it was prior to the situation that Rebecca was dealt, but we'll still take it.
There will be more coming out of inheritance this year. That number popped back up. Now that the road bond funds are gone, pretty much, it went from 400,000, I think, to like 780,000. Plus, there's like another 20,000 one to juvenile. So 800,000 will come out of inheritance, this one is in this budget. I think it was 375 or 380 or 400, goes to 400,000 I think last year, but we had all those road bond funds that we used in case of. Don't forget, you have jail inspection too.
Yep.
Since we can't.
Give some time for Chow. All right, is there any other questions for Becky?
Are you guys good with the changes we made for the publication for the paper?
Somewhere we are on the aggregate, I'm pretty happy that we're still where we are.
Yeah, that's, that's salary for Tyler, kind of.
I wonder if that's a reimbursement from the state, since that was mandated cost. Suppose, Chris?
Probably not. Generally would be the case. All righty. Have anything else for the budget workshop? Comments, questions, anything on the budget? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our quarterly walkthrough of the jail, county detention center.